School Superintendent, delighted to see all of you here tonight. Joining me at the moment is Phil Dwyer, our Chair of the Boards. And we are going to go ahead and get started. For our students, we are going to ask that you come from this direction. So if you walk either along the back and down this aisle to receive your award. And then, as we call each group, we will be asking you to stay for a group photo for the certain groups. Just two quick announcements also. Our Fairfield Ludlow High School Headmaster, Greg Hatze, is not with us tonight, but he wanted people to know it's not because he didn't want to be here. But his own daughter is receiving a very similar award tonight, so he's celebrating as a father. And we are a little bit out of order because we have a few students tonight that are going to their very own concerts. So we're going to do those students first. And we are going to start with the CAE Awards. And the CAE Student Leadership Award is presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. The criteria for selection is based on exemplary leadership skills. And tonight, we are going to start by recognizing Emma Terrello, Fairfield Woods. Emma is an exemplary student at Fairfield Woods, earning academic honors each marking period throughout middle school. Emma enjoys helping others in community service. She volunteers at the Torch Club at Wakeman Boys and Girls Club, where she has helped out in many ways, including preparing and serving meals at the Prospect House in Bridgeport. Emma is a talented athlete as well, and was an active member of Woods' girls' basketball team. She also enjoys playing basketball, soccer, and lacrosse on community teams. Emma is described by her teachers as outgoing, helpful to her peers, polite, and respectful with a strong work ethic. She may pursue further study and physical therapy, but is keeping the door open to other career paths. We will miss her next year, but she will be a great addition to the freshman class at Ludlow High School. And next, we are recognizing William Showstack, also from Fairfield Woods. Will has excelled at Fairfield Woods and has earned academic honors throughout his middle school years. He is humble and inquisitive, attributes that make him a good student and a great member of the student body. Will is active in his church and participates in service projects, helping others in the community. Will loves science and attributes this to his inspiring teachers at Woods. He hopes to pursue a career in the field of science when he is older. Next year, Will plans to attend Fairfield Ludlow High School, as well as the aquaculture program in Bridgeport. He is well on his way to pursuing his love and passion for science. All of us at Fairfield Woods congratulate Will for receiving this honor and wish him well when he joins the freshman class at Ludlow next year. And if we could just get a round of applause for these two before they go to their concerts. And next, we're going to recognize some students for Superintendent's Awards. Thank you very much. The Superintendent Student Recognition Award is presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. Criteria for selection is based on community service, academic prowess, and leadership in the school community. Our first honoree tonight is Ava Pesamonte, Fairfield Woods. Ava is an outstanding student, consistently earning academic honors at Fairfield Woods. She has many interests, but particularly enjoys science class. She is considering work in medicine someday, perhaps as an ophthalmologist. Ava is very active in local theater, with roles in productions of Beauty and the Beast, Annie and Shrek. She volunteers at her church, preparing meals at a local shelter, and raising money for Native American high school out west. Ava is a member of the track and field and cross-country teams and has a black belt in taekwondo. She was creator of the Woods Bus Loop Band, a small ensemble that volunteers to play for other students in the school lobby before the day begins. Ava was also selected to receive the Superintendent Award at Holland Hill three years ago. Congratulations to Ava on receiving this deserving award twice. Our next honoree is Emmett Derby from Burr. Emmett loves to help others in our community. He has taught younger students how to play his favorite sport, Gaelic football. And has been involved in a program called Shoveling for Seniors, where he and his brother helped shovel snow at the homes of seniors. Emmett has been part of Burr Student Council twice, and was part of an outreach group that made stress balls, sold them, and bought books for a school in a neighboring district. Emmett has deservedly received all ones on his progress report for work, social skills, and effort. We are most proud of the time Emmett has spent helping one particular student at Burr. Every day, Emmett helps the student pack his bags, escorts him to class, sits with him at specials, supports him in gym class, and makes him feel special. We are incredibly proud of Emmett at Burr. Our next honoree is Henry Kelly from Dwight. When asked to describe Henry Kelly, the words "kind," "has my back," "makes me laugh," "cooperative," "dependable," "compassionate," "empathetic," "loyal," and "responsible" are how his family, peers, and staff at Dwight School responded. Henry consistently demonstrates excellent work habits and social skills. Over the past two years, Henry has taken a strong interest in history, researching, writing, and sharing his knowledge through PowerPoint presentations, web boards, and plays. Two of his most outstanding presentations focused on the Civil War and the 20th century. Henry lives by a strong set of values. He does the right thing because it's the right thing to do. He is a team player, and he can be paired with any student and learn from the experience. He is a well-rounded individual who finds as much joy on the soccer field as he does having a leaf blower strapped on his back. Our next honoree, Cassidy Meehan from Holland Hill. Cassidy exemplifies leadership, scholarship, and citizenship, and is most deserving of this recognition. She is a natural leader both inside and outside of the classroom. She is kind and patient with all students. She exhibits a maturity beyond that of a typical fifth grader, and often puts the needs of others before her own. Cassidy is a superb role model. This past fall, she was elected by both her teachers and her peers to attend a leadership conference at Sacred Heart University. At Holland Hill, she helps others through her participation in Holland Hill Heroes, Safety Patrol, and Job Corps. This year, she has also helped to raise money for UNICEF, and has collected food for the Fairfield Food Pantry. Cassidy participates in travel soccer, and is active at her synagogue. Holland Hill is honored to have Cassidy as a student, and is very proud of her achievements. Our next honoree is Nolan Tierney from Jennings. Jennings School is proud to have Nolan Tierney as this year's recipient of the Superintendent's Award. Nolan is an exemplary representative of the Jennings 5th Grade. He has contributed to the school community as a former member of the student leadership team. He shares his musical talents as a percussionist in the school band. He is very capable academically and assists others in need on a regular basis. He is insightful beyond his years, and has the capability to bring out the best in his peers with his calm, encouraging demeanor. Nolan is also musically involved outside of school. He plays and performs with a percussion ensemble at a local percussion studio. He swims and takes karate lessons. Nolan makes a difference every day. He is a great role model for all. Jennings School is very proud of Nolan. Our next honoree is Mahela Tarotnew from McKinley. Born in Moldova, Mahela moved to the United States with her family in the middle of kindergarten. An excellent student, Mahela is in the gifted program, is a member of the student council. She is a student leader at McKinley who was chosen to help the Commissioner of Education learn about schools during her tour. Mahela is a member of McKinley Singers and the Fairfield County Children's Choir, which recently recorded Be Our Guest for Good Morning America. Creatively gifted, she has made posters representing each month's character trait which hang in our lobby. She also makes beautiful boxes, which she fills with clothes for donation to charities here in the U.S. and Moldova. Mahela is an excellent, incredible student who has touched the lives of many students and teachers at McKinley. Next honoree is Asha Juliet Millhill. Asha is a young lady of many talents. She has met with success in all academic areas throughout her elementary school years. She participates in athletic endeavors, including gymnastics, on the Excel Team, and soccer on the old Premier Select Team. In 2017, her achievements in gymnastics have led her to the Connecticut State Gymnastics Meet, where she earned a third-place medal in the Balance Beam Event. Her soccer success has also led to playoff experiences at the state level. Asha was selected for the Mill Hill Leadership Program and attended a conference at Sacred Heart University in the fall of 2016. Her leadership role in the Look for the Good Project at Mill Hill, including organizing the whole school kickoff assembly, and making multiple school-wide announcements concerning this gratitude campaign. Asha's positive attitude and strong work ethic make her an exemplary 5th grade role model for her peers. Our next honoree is Otto O'Brien, North Stratfield. Otto O'Brien is a talented 5th grader who excels in all things academic. He is an enthusiastic reader and enjoys the challenge of solving complicated math problems. An avid violinist, Otto was recently chosen to participate in the 5th Grade District-Wide Honors Orchestra. Strong in mind, and even stronger in character, Otto is a student who can be counted on to help those in need. He is a considerate student who displays his leadership throughout the day, and thus was selected to represent North Stratfield at the Leadership Conference at Sacred Heart University just this past January. In addition to being a role model in school, Otto is a Boy Scout who has helped many through his charitable works. He has participated in beach cleanups, collected, gently used children's books for those in need, and has raised money for St. Baldry's as part of Team Teddy, where he notably doubled his fundraising from last year. Our next honoree is Natalie Compaire from Osborne Hill. Natalie excels in school academically and socially. She is both a member of the Gifted and Talented Program and a Ressess Ambassador at Osborne Hill. She recently joined the OAKE National Honor Choir and traveled with it to perform at the Kimmel Center in Philadelphia. Natalie participates in the Backpack Project with her church, donating school supplies to children in need. With a Girl Scout troop, she cooks food for Operation Hope, donates dog toys to the Westport Humane Society, cleans Fairfield's beaches, and collects money for organizations such as the Special Olympics and the Yale New Haven Children's Hospital. When she was in 1st grade, Natalie held a bake sale where she raised $150 for UNICEF. More recently, Natalie worked with family and friends to sell handcrafted candle holders, donating their impressive profit of over $1,000 to earthquake victims in Ecuador. Our next honoree is Annabelle Guerrero, Riverfield. Annabelle is a hard worker who is generous with her time and talent. Oh, we have a whole group coming. Awesome. As a gifted 3rd grade student, she engaged in many projects, including engineering, futuristic cities, inventing solutions for natural disasters, and conducting deep brain stimulation surgery on an animated website. Annabelle has the ability to connect with people of all ages. In addition to spending a day discussing American freedoms with high school students, she also researched and taught a very successful mini-math lesson for our 1st grade classroom, and the students loved her. She is an avid chess player, which has taught her a lot about life, Annabelle says. "In chess, you have to think about your moves before you make them. It's the same with life. You have to stop and think about your actions before you make them." Annabelle is a kind and compassionate young lady, and is very deserving of this award. Our next honoree is Margaret Fishback from Roger Sherman. Maggie is an exemplary 5th grade student at Sherman School. While in school, she demonstrates excellent work habits and social skills. Academically, Maggie consistently strives to put forward her very best effort across all areas of the curriculum. Socially, she volunteers for morning safety patrol duties, is a member of the band as a trombone player, and displays strong leadership qualities among her peers. Within her home community, Maggie volunteers her time at a horse barn, where she assists younger students in camp activities in the summer. She also maintains a busy schedule outside of school with dance, soccer, competitive horseback riding, competitive gymnastics, and basketball, all which help keep her an exceptionally well-rounded individual. Our next honoree is George Bentley from Stratfield School. The first one through his classroom door each morning is George Bentley, ready to take on the day and to reach out to others that need a helping hand. George embodies all of the ideals of a good leader. He is thoughtful and decisive, strong and kind, patient and selfless. He is a proud and integral member of the Stratfield Student Leadership Team, and also plays the trombone in the school band. Away from school, George participates in baseball and golf and taekwondo. George is an altar server at Our Lady of the Assumption Church, and an active participant in his religious education class. One impressive quality he possesses is bringing out the best in everybody he is around, whether in school or outside of school. George is a caring boy who deserves recognition for his leadership and a desire to help others. Our next honoree is Brian Meeger, Roger Ludlow. Brian is an exemplary student who has achieved honors and high honors recognition all throughout his middle school career. He has received the Roger Ludlow Middle School Citizenship Award every year, and the prestigious Top Dog Award for his outstanding service to his school and community. Brian is an active volunteer with the following organizations: World Champion Taekwondo, the Special Education Parent Teachers Association, his church, Thomas Merton Center, and the Roger Ludlow Middle School School Climate Committee. Brian is currently working to achieve gold medal acclaim through the United States President's Volunteer Award for accumulating 300-plus hours in one year. Our next honoree is Teresa Spanosa from Tomlinson. Tessa Spanosa has learned to face challenges and setbacks by seeking out positive ways to help the people around her. In school, she is actively engaged in both the Tomlinson Jazz Band and the District-Wide 8th Grade Honors Band. In the classroom, she has earned honors every marking period. In her church and her youth group, she's participated in local mission projects and traveled to Washington, D.C. to work in a homeless shelter. This summer, she will help her youth group plan a mission trip to Ghana. She will also continue to work at the Pilot House, a special needs center to help children perform in their drama programs. On the softball field, she is the catcher. The catcher has to be a leader and act as a leader on the field, picking up her teammates when the pressure is on. Next honoree is Jaclyn Caruso, Fairfield High School, Walter Fitzgerald Campus. Jackie is a kind and caring student who transferred to the Walter Fitzgerald Campus from Fairfield Ward High School in September. She is dedicated to her schoolwork, classwork, and to the Walter Fitzgerald positive school culture. She has consistently been on the top level in our school, as she maintains a GPA of 4.0 or above, and she exemplifies the Walter Fitzgerald's respect, responsibility, and integrity. Jackie has overcome personal obstacles to achieve her current level of success. Her accomplishments are an indication of her commitment to education and her overall personal growth. As part of her studies at Walter Fitzgerald, Jackie has participated in our Community Service Learning Program. She spends two hours a week at Holland Hill, helping in a 2nd grade class as a component of her Humanities Project-based learning work. Recently, Jackie has shared that her work at Holland Hill has influenced her thoughts about her post-secondary study. Jackie seeks to improve life for herself and others, and we are recognizing her accomplishments as well as her potential leadership with this award. Our next honoree is Shay O'Donnell, Fairfield Ludlow, Warner House. Not many individuals can say that they have attended nine different schools in their K-12 career. Shay is one of these arriving at Fairfield Ludlow in her sophomore year. Due to her positivity, resiliency, and adaptability, Shay regardless of her zip code excels. Shay has a 4.36 GPA and is a member of the National Math and Science Honor Societies. After her sophomore year, she elected to take three AP courses, and the result of her work was earning As in all three courses and Fives on the AP exam. Despite suffering from medical setbacks, Shay continued to pursue her interest in ballet. She attends a local dance school and works as a customer service representative. She is an active member of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Make-A-Wish Club. Despite all the moving and adversity, Shay wouldn't change a thing, stating, "Because each experience I've had has made me the person I am today." Our next honoree is Emily Damaso from Fairfield Ludlow High School, Webster House. Emily's defining quality is her passion, which she applies to both her personal and academic lives. She will stop at nothing to fight for what she believes is right, taking action as a volunteer for Operation Hope and participating in our Unified Sports Program. Her strong leadership skills have catapulted her to become captain of two varsity sports, soccer and lacrosse. Friends, teachers, and teammates can all describe her as intuitive, mature, and kind. On top of all this, she earned a commanding high school GPA, in no small part because of genuine love for learning and her willingness to take on challenges. Our next honoree is Ayana Kara George, Fairfield Ludlow, Wright House. Ayana has achieved an impressive 4.1 GPA due to her academic success in the most rigorous classes that are offered at Fairfield Ludlow High School, leading to her induction to all four National Honor Societies. She has an insatiable thirst for knowledge, particularly in the field of environmental science, where she hopes to one day leave her mark. This is meant not only taking AP Environmental Science this year, but also engaging in summer opportunities with the wider Conservation Sea Turtle Network in Costa Rica, and the United States Virgin Islands National Park System in St. John. Whether she is searching the reef for hurt sea turtles, serving a more local community with the Appalachian Service Project, or sharing her Greek heritage through performances of traditional dance, she is well on her way to achieving her goal of becoming a nationally and globally impactful woman. Our next honoree is Natalie Ziltsova, Fairfield Ward, FitzHouse. Natalia cares deeply about school and community, and contributes to both in astonishing fashion. Natalia's taken 10 AP courses, achieving exemplary grades in each, as evident from her 4.5 cumulative GPA. She is an accomplished athlete on the cross-country and tennis teams, serves as head girl and soprano section leader in the audition group Women's Choir, and has devoted endless hours training and socializing puppies to prepare them for being seeing-eye dogs with guiding eyes for the blind. Natalia has also been dedicated to raising abuse awareness for teens as a presenter, fundraiser, and peer counselor, benefiting students at both high schools and middle schools, local PTAs, and the Fairfield Cares Organization. FitzHouse, along with the entire Ward community, couldn't be more proud of Natalia, not only for all she has done, but for who she is. Our next honoree is Sarah Asool, Fairfield Ward, Peacock House. This extraordinary young woman is described by her school counselor as a quiet and powerful leader. Her perspectives are mature beyond her years, as is her concern for others. She has proven to be a strong advocate for young women, spending a great deal of time mentoring at the McKinley Wakeman After-School Mentoring and Outreach Program. Her interest in world affairs and providing a voice to all prompted her to create a political literature magazine club at Ward. Sarah is a stellar student, taking many, many advanced courses. She truly embodies every quality of our Ward acronym, which is why we are so proud to honor her tonight. Our next honoree is Cameron Luther, Fairfield Ward, Townsend House. Cameron is a motivated and personable student who portrays our school's mission of being welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical. He has earned a 4.01 GPA and participated in several AP classes, including AP Economics, AP Language and Composition, AP US History, American Studies, AP Physics, AP Literature and Composition, AP US Government and Politics, AP Calculus AB, and AP Environmental Science. and Composition, AP US Government and Politics, AP Calculus AB, and AP Environmental Science. In addition, Cameron is a co-captain of the debate team, co-president of the Fairfield Ward High School Young Democrats, a member of the National Honor Society, a member of the Raising Abuse Awareness for Teens Club, and a member of the Latin Honor Society. In his free time, Cameron accompanied his church youth group on a two-week service trip to India, and from this experience organized a nonprofit club, Humanity Helping Humanity, entirely dedicated to raising support for impoverished children. Townsend House is very proud of all Cameron's accomplishments. Congratulations. And congratulations, those were our superintendent honorees. Next, we're going to recognize the Cabe Student Leadership Awards, and they are presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and the criteria for selection is based on exemplary leadership skills. We're going to begin with Madeline Crawford, Roger Ludlow. Maddie is an exemplar student who has achieved high honors every quarter in middle school, who contributes to our school's literary magazine, Ludlow Light. Maddie is a talented ballerina who participates in fundraising efforts through Dance Across America and has been selected to perform in a special Nutcracker performance annually for the Bridgeport Elementary School. She is a plutist who is a select member of the townwide Fairfield Honors Band Ensemble, and in Maddie's spare time, she volunteers reading and writing book reviews for Bank Street College and has even traveled with Roger Ludlow Middle School's Ludlow Corps to deliver medical supplies and water filtration systems to impoverished villages and remote regions of Ecuador. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Armon Ajul. Armon has been an active member of Group Group since 2012. This group has provided 50 to 60 families in Fairfield County with food, hygiene products, and clothing. Armon has also volunteered numerous times as a food server at Merton House in Bridgeport and Operation Hope in Fairfield. He has served on the Roger Ludlow Middle School Student Leadership Club and has been asked to attend the Connecticut Association of Schools Student Leadership Conference for the past two years. Further, Armon is an exemplar student who has always been on the Roger Ludlow Middle School Honor and High Honor Roll. Congratulations. Next, we're recognizing Danya Ali Tomlinson. Danya is an amazing student who exemplifies leadership through her commitment to academic excellence as well as her activities outside of school. At Tomlinson, Danya is a member of the Chamber Orchestra, a homeroom helper, and an art helper. She puts in 100% effort in every assignment, and her efforts have awarded her high honors all three years at Tomlinson. Outside of school, Danya is on a year-round swim team and tutors at Kumon. Swimming daily while maintaining her grades has taught Danya to be organized and to manage her time efficiently. Danya enjoys being a part of the team on school projects and on her swim team. She likes to assist others and does so without hesitation. Danya's friends, teachers, and family describe her as hardworking, determined, strong-headed, and focused. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Brady Pomer from Tomlinson. Brady is that student who is always focused, always working to help his peers, always taking great pride in the work he produces and the actions that define him as a person. He is one of the youngest on a travel hockey team, plays on a travel basketball team, works with his family every year to raise money in the battle against ALS, and through his piano recitals has raised money many years for St. Jude's. Brady carries with him a quiet integrity based on a few simple beliefs he holds. "I believe if you can hold yourself together in and out of school and stay positive through the ride, there's not much that can go wrong. Ever since I was little, I've always felt the need to look out for people. I believe that when everybody can be a good person, that's a heck of a world." Congratulations. Our next honoree is Hannah Sharp, Fairfield Ludlow High School. Hannah has a wisdom beyond her years and a humility that is uncommon among her peers. She has excelled academically in one of the most rigorous programs available at Fairfield Ludlow High School, and has deliberately chosen classes in which she has both a great deal of interest and those that will challenge her the most. However, her definition of success extends beyond the classroom, and Hannah believes in the importance of helping others and has, in many ways, embodied this belief in the myriad ways that she has assisted others in achieving her goals. Whether she is working behind the scenes to promote positive interaction on social media, or running alongside a peer to help him finish running the mile in the PE class, she is proven to be not only an outstanding student and a competitive athlete, but also a positive role model at Fairfield Ludlow High School. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Paul Jones from Fairfield Ludlow High School. Paul has achieved an impressive 4.6 GPA due to academic success in the most rigorous courses Fairfield Ludlow High School has to offer. Paul consistently makes the most out of his high school experience. He is a member of the National Honor Society, captain of the cross-country team, band captain, and holds a position in the English Honor Society. Paul also leads Bible study at his local church. As a result of dedication to his academics, Paul has received the Connecticut Governor's Scholar Award, is a National Merit Scholar, and class of 2017 valedictorian. Paul has earned the respect, trust, and confidence of his teachers and peers because he is a genuine young man. Whether Paul is teaching Sunday School or tutoring younger kids through the Urban Impact Connecticut Program, Paul has demonstrated that he is a valuable member of our community. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Jacqueline Kaiser, Fairfield Ward High School. It is with great pleasure that we recognize Jackie Kaiser with the Cabe Student Leadership Awards. Jackie is a founding member of Raising Abuse Awareness for Teens. She works closely with the Center for Family Justice to spread awareness about risky behaviors and the importance of healthy relationships. She also created a program, Calls for Justice, which donated old used cell phones, and currently Starwood Hotels are donating to her program. Last year, Jackie presented to the United Nations Conference on Gender Equality where she addressed violence against women. She is the co-anchor of our weekly Ward TV broadcast. She also received the Youth Activism and Community Service Award by the Center for Family Justice. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Daniel Noor. Daniel lives the Ward mission, welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical every day. In addition to his 4.48 GPA and challenging AP classes, AP Government, AP Physics, AP Calculus, and AP Spanish, Daniel is an accomplished singer, actor, and cellist. He's been in almost every concert and school play at Ward since ninth grade. Currently, Dan is not only the president of one of our most active organizations, the Key Club, but his leadership and responsibility have earned him the office of New England District Level Divisional Lieutenant Governor and Board Member for all of New England. In his spare time, Dan earned the rank of Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America. Congratulations.
So, this is one of the best nights of the year if you're serving on a board of education. I want to thank Trisha Pitko, a member of our board, for assisting me in handing them out. We're honoring the students, but students just didn't get here magically. They're supported by family, and friends, and teachers, and the entire staff of our school district, so give yourselves a round of applause. One of your rewards is to sit through the rest of our Board of Education meeting. Or you can go out and congratulate with your student, and we'll take a short break before we start the meeting so that you can say hello to friends and family. Thank you. Thank you. Want to open the regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. Present is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Trisha Pitko. I'm out of order, but this is Jennifer Maxen-Cannelli, Mr. John Llewellyn, and let me welcome to his first meeting, Mr. Nick Asa, who is joining our board based on the Board of Selectmen's vote last week. If I could have you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a unique item on our agenda for the election of the Board of Ed Vice Chairman. Anthony Calabrese resigned due to his appointment being the Director of Parks and Recreation, and the Board of Selectmen took action, as I just mentioned, to appoint Nick Asa to that position. Now that we're back to nine people, although Ms. Carnell is ill and could not make it tonight, we will have an election to replace Mr. Calabrese as Vice Chairman, so you see that the seat is vacant. Once the election is held, the winner will take that seat, and then Nick will take the vacancy. Anyways, so the nominations are open. Do I have a nomination for the position of Vice Chair, Jessica Gerber?
I'd like to nominate Trisha Pitko, please.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Are there any further nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Seeing none, all in favor of Trisha Pitko as the Vice Chair of the Board of Education. This will fill a term ending in November when we have our annual election process. Please raise your hand. Mr. Asa, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxen-Cannelli, opposed. This is Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. John Llewellyn. The motion passes six to two. So, take a second to move over, if you will. Take your name tag so people don't think that you are Nick. And Nick, grab your name tag and fill in the vacant seat. Congratulations, Ms. Pitko.
Thank you.
So now we are, time for student reports. As I mentioned at our last meeting, I think this is your last meeting of your service, unless you are juniors and coming back, but even if you're not, please feel free to, after your reports, if you want to make any comments about your year of service, feel free to do so. So we'll go with Fairfield Ludlow High School first. Catherine?
Hello. Good evening. To start this off, senior internships start tomorrow. All participants will be out of school from the time of May 24th to June 15th, working in the field that they would most likely see fit as their college graduate and what they want to do after. And then on June 14th, there will be somewhat of a reception for the companies that hosted the Ludlow students and to appreciate the teacher mentors that helped us along the way and gave us guidance in this really interesting but really fun process. Next was the Family Consumer Science Night that was held Wednesday, May 17th, that I did mention at our last meeting. I do believe that this was the biggest turnout that we've ever had out of my four years in this Family Consumer Science Night. It was a bittersweet moment for all the seniors who are involved in both the fashion and in the cooking program. The food produced by the cooking program was absolutely phenomenal. The macaroons were amazing. But the clothes that were produced by the fashion students were stunning, and taking four years of fashion and being with the same group of girls, it was very fun to see the evolution of their styles and the techniques that they used. So it was a great way to see who they are as a person through clothes instead of any other way. Thirdly, the music awards were given out last Thursday. Senior prom was this past Saturday at the Trumbull Marriott. The students involved did an amazing job with the food, DJ, and venue. It was truly a great way to end the senior year with everyone together having the time of our lives. Next, the softball semifinals for SDEC played Darien this afternoon, and both the cross teams are in the state tournament. Lastly, we're all excited about graduation on June 15th. Closing this chapter in our lives is/will be a truly humbling experience, and I would just like to say thank you to all the faculty members, mentors, student friends, our colleagues at Ward, and you, the Board of Education, for helping us just make this year truly enjoyable, and I'm grateful to have been given this opportunity to be a student representative and to give you all the new upcoming things that were happening at Ludlow. So I want to thank you again for this experience.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our representative from Ludlow? No? Who wants to go first from Ward?
I suppose that's me. All right, we're going to start off with the sports updates. So we had our varsity baseball game at Harbor Yard against Ludlow. We were victorious. However, the day before, Ludlow did come out victorious in the softball game, so congrats to them. We have some teams that are waiting to be ranked for their state finals, so we are waiting anxiously for the results. Meanwhile, we had the track meet against Ludlow, the boys and girls. The Ward boys team was victorious, whilst the Ludlow girls were victorious, so I guess the playing field is still a bit equal. We had our mock crash two days before junior prom on May 18th with the Fairfield Fire, Police, and Ambulance Services and the Letgo Funeral Home. It was attended by all juniors and basically, it's like a simulation, reminding students to be careful as prom night is a big night, and they were given warnings about, you know, the dangers of drinking and driving. Also, that night, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony for juniors and seniors, which was really nice to see everyone getting together. We had the new club leaders elected.
So going off of what she said, junior prom, we had that on May 20th. We set that up in the courtyard, we set up a tent and everything, so a lot of the juniors were excited to go, had a lot of fun. On Friday, May 19th, we had Ward Day. There was about 80 presenters, and the topic was Career Day, so we all got to, the whole school got to sign up to go to two presentations, so we all had a really, like, nice time seeing all the presentations, looking at all the careers. careers that are available for us after high school. Um, everyone seemed to enjoy it. There was a lot of positive feedback for it, and also, on the same day, we had a keynote speaker that everyone was able to attend, and I know Asher wanted to elaborate on this, but basically it was, uh, it was called "My First Job," and he was giving us advice on, uh, what to do for interviews.
So, yeah, um, the guy who came in was Steven Greenberg from WCBS Radio out of New York. Um, he was basically giving us a presentation as titled "My First Job," and, um, he was giving us advice about what to do for our first interview, um, basically emphasizing that we, as, um, as we're applying for jobs, should emphasize, like, what we can do for the place that we want to work at. And he was basically giving us a lot of pointers, um, which are really helpful, especially for the seniors who are going into college, who are probably looking for jobs and internships, and it was, uh, really helpful. Um, you know, he was emphasizing the importance of giving examples, and, um, there was a lot of great feedback from, from the program.
Uh, just a couple more notes. Uh, the seniors are all looking forward to the end of the activities. On next weekend, on June 3rd, the seniors have their prom, so we're all really excited and hyped for that. And then we have our award ceremony on the, on June 14th, and then graduation on 15th. Um, some closing statements. Asher and I are, like, just really grateful that we had the opportunity to do this for two straight years. It was a really great opportunity, and I'm usually really bad at public speaking, so this really helped me step out of my shell a little bit. So I'd want to thank, uh, Ward and everyone for just supporting us all throughout the years, and thank you.
Um, hello. Um, I've, you know, um, I was really appreciative to be offered the opportunity to come, uh, be a student representative at the Board of Education, just kind of like having our voices heard, kind of, like, you know, being representative of the school that I go to. It was like a school that I love, and, you know, it's really fun, um, being here and being able to update you on everything that's going on at our school. Um, and I'm just really proud that I have had the opportunity to do this for you for, again, two straight years. So thank you for all of this. It's been a great experience.
Yeah, any questions for our representatives from Ward? This is Maxon Connolly.
I'm hoping all three young ladies could tell us their, where they're going for next year.
Um, I'm going to University of Connecticut at Storrs Campus. Uh, I'll be attending Loyola Marymount out in LA.
Um, I'll be attending Kent State University in Kent, Ohio.
Well, thank you very much for your year or two years of service, uh, and for occasionally
answering Board of Ed members' questions that are thrown at you at the last minute. Uh, we wish you well at your respective college careers and in your life. As always, you're welcome to stay, or you can go and accomplish other things as well. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We're now at the point of the time before public comment on agenda items. If anybody wishes to come forward, please come up to the podium and, uh, state your name and address and make your comment. The lights are bright here, so it takes me a little while to make sure nobody's coming forward. I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll move on to old business, the adoption of four policies for board members. These were issued at the last meeting, and so I presume that you have brought them with you, and we'll act on them at one at a time. And the first one, A1, uh, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt policy 5141.213, Students Administering Medication Opioid Overdose Prevention. Do I have a motion? This is Maxon Connolly. Mr. Patton seconded. Uh, Mrs. Maxon Connolly, do you have any comments that you wish to make?
Uh, no, I'll simply say that for all four, I received no questions, so, aside from the one that I had prior to the last meeting, uh, from Mrs. Lou McCormick, which I addressed at the last meeting, um, so I won't be adding anything to either, to any of the four.
Any comments from board members? Any questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. Uh, I did have one question as it relates to, uh, the definition of school medical advisor. So if we're looking at the first page, uh, under delegation of responsibility, it looks as though a school medical advisor is a defined term, but I'm not sure if it was. Is that someone who is a district employee, or is that someone who is a doctor consulting for?
Um, I was hoping Mr. Coy could come up and help me with that one. Or shout it from the seats.
Probably is better if you, this is being recorded, I believe, so it's better if you do come up.
Sorry, I shouldn't have given you that option.
And, of course, state your name and position with the school district. We'll leave that out of the minutes. Yes, please.
Uh, the school medical advisor is, uh, Dr. McDonald, and he serves on the Fairfield Board of Health, and in that, also in that role as a school medical advisor. So, any of the, he's not an employee of the board, but any of the medical, uh, information that we need beyond our school nurses or beyond the supervisor of nurses, uh, is referred to Dr. McDonald.
This is a follow-up. Is this, is the school medical advisor always a member of the Fairfield Board of Health?
Uh, to my knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Patton, do you know that?
And I do apologize for drawing a blank on his name when he asked.
I don't believe that's correct, because the Board of Health members are nominated through the standard channels, so I don't believe that he has to be a member of the Board of Health.
I don't know that he is, that he works for the Board of Health.
Correct.
He's connected with the Board of Health, but not for us.
He's a great and very knowledgeable guy, but... Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Llewellyn?
No, I'm good with that one, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a voting item, so we'll go out to the public. Any member of the public that wishes to make a comment on the adoption of this policy concerning administering, uh, medication to students, please come forward, state your name and address. I don't see anybody coming forward, so back to the board for the vote. But, Mr. Patton has a question.
Uh, through the chair to Dr. Jones, um, inevitably, you know, unfunded mandates like this, uh, always have budget implications, so under, uh, the Required Training and Prevention Training Plan C, um, it says the district will create a plan to be implemented no later than July 1st, 2017, requiring the training of all school professionals, paraprofessionals, et cetera. Do we have any idea, um, between timeframe-wise and cost-wise, of what implications that might be?
I would actually defer to the Policy Committee. I don't know if they discussed that at all. We did, and I'm trying to find my notes on it. Um, hold on one second. Sorry about this. All right. I'm not finding my notes. I know that, uh, initially, we, um, met with the nursing supervisor of the district, and she spoke of how she is already doing the work of communicating with the company that makes this, um, about getting some free samples to a large degree that she can, um, and so some of that we're already having in. Um, I don't believe it's going to be sufficient for the entire district and what we're looking to cover. Um, I don't have final numbers on that, but that is something that we had discussed in policy.
That's just for cost of materials, though, right?
Correct.
So, in terms of actually the time to train the staff?
Actually, she made no reference to that, and I, I'll admit that cost of training didn't come up because I believe that it came, that it was something that she would be in charge of with staff and training of the staff. Um, I'm happy to go and confirm that that is the case, um, but I, that didn't come up as a topic, the cost of training.
So it's basically the Board of Health, um, or the nursing staff, the nursing supervisors, the Board of Health, well, that person is solely responsible for training all staff in these techniques. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding.
And frequently, we, I don't know that it's for this case, but frequently with state mandates for training, they'll get scheduled as, uh, as time permits within the scheduled professional development days. Any other questions on this policy? If not, um, for the board's vote, uh, the motion in front of you is that the Board of Education adopt policy 5141.213, Students Administering Medication Opioid Overdose Prevention. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, and just as a side note for board, for members of the public who might be noting, uh, while Nick, Mr. Asa, is a new board member, uh, he has taken the opportunity to read the policies given out at the last meeting and talked with Jennifer so that he is up to speed for voting purposes. The second item, uh, 6B, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt policy 5144.1, Students Use of Physical Force. Do I have a motion? This is Maxon Connolly. Mrs. Gerber seconds. Mrs. Maxon Connolly, any comments? Nope. The answer is no. Board members, any questions or comments on this particular board? Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. Um, a couple of questions here. One is, under the definition of school employees, we have, uh, a wide list, which includes, say, substitutes. Um, and then when we define further back, uh, training required, uh, we don't give that same list. It's, they're not necessarily parallel to one another. Um, so I don't know if we should eliminate folks within, uh, the school employee list who may not get training, or if we should be more specific back in the definition, um, which I believe is, training should be provided to school professionals, paraprofessionals, staff members, administrators. So that's a different list than the folks we're defining as a school employee. So, for example, you know, if substitute teachers don't receive training, uh, but they're defined as a school employee, and the policy talks about school employees being able to administer restraint, um, I'm not sure that we want to have that same list. And the easiest way to deal with it could be to just strike substitute teachers, uh, because the others look like they should probably all receive training, but if, uh, we could get an administrator to comment on if that's a true statement or not, it may not, may or may not be an issue.
And that did not come up as a topic. Um, we focused on other aspects. We were looking at the crisis intervention teams quite a bit. Um, I don't have a reaction to that. That wasn't something we looked at. Obviously, I didn't ask anybody ahead of time if there's a reason for the different lists. This is not one that we modified, um, so this was, you know, entirely a suggested policy that has been used elsewhere, so I don't have a reaction to that. I would not want to change anything without, again, as you have asked, checking with an administrator in terms of the difference in the lists.
Do we have any administrator who wishes to come forward and shed some light on this question? You might want to switch seats.
And so ju, just to clarify the question, so the detailed list under school employee, you're questioning whether on that list substitute teachers should be eliminated?
Should, so if, if the policy references school employees.
Right.
Kind of throughout as being able to do what's required. Um, it also then talks about who gets training, but if, say, substitute teachers, I'm just using that as an example, don't get training, are they able to use restraint, physical force? And I would think that the answer would be no, because it probably is not cost-effective to train all substitute teachers, so if they were struck from this list, the list would be more parallel to the list in the back.
Okay, does that, is that clear, Mr. Coy?
Yes, and, um...
So under, under training, either does it need to be stricken or give it a separate line, or under training, does there need to be exception language that this does not apply to substitutes?
Right, or to strike them from the definition up front.
Well, I don't know if I would strike the definition of employee, strike substitute teachers from the definition of employee, because they are employees, but there are specified people who must be trained. Um, it's not required that substitute teachers be trained. In fact, I believe there's pending legislation to change the, the, uh, list of people who must be trained, uh, because we're seeing as a mandate that, uh, was not completely practical to implement.
Right.
But the legislation's pending.
And I think my only response to that is, in school employees, that is not a universal list. That is a selected list. For example, we don't have, uh, we don't have, uh, maintenance or, or custodial listed on that.
Because they don't have direct, they don't have direct supervisory contact with kids.
Correct, but my point is that's a selective, uh, definition of school employee for the purposes of this policy.
Well, I mean, we could, we could choose not to, you know, not to vote on it, or send it back to committee, and we can investigate it further with, uh, with CAVE if that's...
Well, and I've got two other comments, so we might want to do that, and I apologize for bringing these up last minute, um, but I did just get the chance to, to read this through. Um, and if we look at D, and these pages are not numbered, so let's see, page one, two, it's the third page, D. Psychopharmalogical, pharmalegic? I can't pronounce it, but that is, uh, school employees may not use that except under these circumstances.
All right, hold on, I apologize, I can't find where you're pointing out. D. Okay, well, I've got a D there. Oh, that D, sorry. Okay.
So if, if, if we look at that particular area there, it says school employees may not do it except under these circumstances, when we look at the training, the training only talks about physical. It doesn't talk about the administration of, of an agent or of a, of a drug. So, clearly, I would think we'd want people trained on that before they're allowed to do it. So that would, I think, probably belong down in G as well, and it would also belong on the following page under Required Training.
And you said you had a third comment?
I do. Um, if we go to F, "A reasonable effort shall be made to provide such notification immediately after such physical restraint." I'm not sure such notification modifies anything. I think that should probably be, a reasonable effort should be made to provide parental or guardian's notification immediately after. I'm not sure what such notification...
That was the language we looked at.
Perfect. So what does that modify?
So those are your three questions. Does the chair have any responses to all three?
Um, I mean, at this point, it's, obviously hesitations. I don't have immediate responses to all of them, uh, the training ones, so I would have no problem holding this policy. Either we can bring it back because we have another policy meeting prior to, um, the next one, and either it'll be coming forward in its same form, in which case I'd be recommending to the chair that it be a voting item, and I would simply have answers for you, or we could possibly have language changes, and I would leave it up to the board if they feel comfortable with it as a first read or voting item.
So at the chair's recommendation, I'll suggest that we allow her to withdraw this motion on unanimous consent. Does there any member of the board that is not happy with withdrawing it? Okay, the motion is therefore withdrawn. It will be placed on the next regular meeting agenda for action, and, uh, we understand that the committee has an opportunity to meet between now and then to, uh, study the three issues that Mr. Llewellyn, Llewellyn brought up. Moving on to item 63, triple I, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt policy 6342, Instruction, 6142, new glasses, Instruction Basic Instructional Program. Do I have a motion? This is Maxon Connolly, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. This is Maxon Connolly, any comments?
No comments.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Uh, any member of the public that wishes to make a comment on this policy, Instruction Basic Instructional Program, please step forward, state your name and address. See nobody rushing forward, back to the board for action. The motion in front of you is that the Board of Education adopt policy 6142, Instruction Basic Instructional Program. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much, and tonight unanimous is 8-0. Uh, the last policy, uh, item four, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt policy 6173, Instruction Homebound slash Hospital Instruction. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Connolly, uh, Mrs. Gerber second. Mrs. Maxon Connolly, any comments?
Nope.
Members of the board, any questions for members of the board? Mr. Llewellyn?
Uh, these are going to be a lot easier than those. Uh, in the first line, hospital, uh, sorry, home and hospital instruction shall be a teaching service available... service available. How are we defining a teaching service? Are we talking about direct instruction? Or are we talking about Internet? Are we talking about, how are we defining teaching service?
As I recall, it could be either. That was on a line that, I think we referenced it at some point, you know, is this, is this what we're talking about with Play-Doh?
That's exactly it.
Is this what we're talking about with someone actually in person? I'm looking down at the PPT paragraph. I don't know if that stipulated it more specifically. No, I think, so I believe it can be, it's dependent on the circumstance, but I believe it could be either.
Okay. So when we go to the third paragraph, "Home instruction may also be provided for students who have been excluded from the regular school attendance for disciplinary reasons?"
Right.
That instruction is going to be defined as direct or teacher?
Right. Although, if I recall correctly, and hopefully Mr. Coyne can do this for me with a nod, this is something that's legislation that's before Connecticut currently, where they may be changing this. Is that correct? That they're looking at the responsibilities of the districts with regard to the instruction of students on expulsion?
Making it required, correct?
At the number of hours. I know that there's something in that that was changing, sorry. And so that-
And the reason I ask is that I thought in the past we had talked about it having to be, because when we talked about the budget, we had talked about it being teacher-led-
Right.
... instruction. This doesn't necessarily say that, and I didn't know if that reflected what's going on in Hartford or not.
Even, if I may say, even when it's online, it still has a teacher behind it. And I would be concerned if we actually started tying this, it had to be a live body, because-
Oh, I'm not. I'm just trying, for clarification.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay. And then just clarification in the next paragraph, please. "No teacher during the school year shall accept remuneration for tutoring students in his or her own class unless the student is designated as homebound and the tutor is employed by the Board of Education." That remuneration-
Mm-hmm.
From whom is that?
So, a currently employed teacher cannot recommend to a parent, "I think you need to hire me as an off-hours tutor." That's not allowed.
Okay.
On the other hand, if, so that, no teacher, but if your teaching role is, you're employed as a tutor by the Board of Education, then that would be a different situation.
So this remuneration is only acceptable when it's being paid for by the Board of Education? It's not acceptable by parents?
That's my reading. That's my reading. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if they're talking about something that's in addition to what the district is providing. That I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
That, this paragraph did, that clarification did, the additional example you're talking about, I don't know. Because that's not something we talked about.
So should we add the language, "No teacher during the school year shall accept remuneration from, you know, an outside party"? I mean, is that what it's trying, what's the intent?
The intent is that you could have a conflict of interest with teachers recommending to parents-
I agree.
-tutoring services, and by the way, you're best off having me being the one hired.
I agree.
So that's my reading of it. I didn't need clarification for that, because I understood what that intended. I'm not sure what is not clear about it.
The word "unless" is what's not clear about it, because I would assume that if the teacher is working, you know, quote-unquote, overtime, or doing private tutoring on behalf of the district, that they'd be remunerated for that, or they'd be given a break on a class or something. There'd be some sort of compensation. So this would imply to me that a teacher could accept remuneration from a student or a student's parents.
Okay, that I can't speak. I don't want to try to make up an answer to that, Dr. Jones. I don't know if you can. But I can't speak to that, because that wasn't something we talked about. And I don't know what, I don't know what the practice is.
Well, I mean, the general practice would be whatever we have set for the homebound, if that's 10 hours, and we are actually paying for that teacher-
Right.
-we wouldn't, we would have an ethical issue with a teacher saying, "Well, just hire me for 20 and pay me extra." I would still read that that, they're going above and beyond what this policy allows that teacher to do. I think that's what you're saying.
It is, but I'm trying to figure out, to me, it can be read either way. So I don't know if we need to clarify, except remuneration from a source other than the Board of Education for tutoring.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly, do you believe that the policy is clear in terms of the intent?
Well, it's clear to me, but again, I mean, this applies to me. So I understood what it meant, and I've seen it in practice. So it's, it is clear to me.
Do you wish to move forward?
So I, I don't have an amendment to offer to it, because it is clear to me, so, but-
Do you wish to move, the motion's on the tables. Do you wish to move forward on the motion?
Not hearing any amendments, sure.
All right. Other questions or comments from Board members? Mr. Patton?
On that first page, the third paragraph, "Home instruction may also be provided," is it definitely "may"? And if so, whose discretion shall, could it be "shall" be provided? I mean, "may" means we could do it, or we don't have to do it. So whose discretion is the "may"? If that's, is it the teachers? Is it the central office staff?
I'm deferring to you on this.
I would say "may" and "shall," really, I would want to, unless Mr. Coyne knows the answer, that's a legal piece. I think he would want to have the attorney weigh in to make sure we're using the right language.
Mm-hmm.
Is this the paragraph about students?
Yes.
So, the question is, do, does the statute require students of sixteen years of age to, although sixteen, accept different types of practices, or is that the law?
So "may" is a permissive word that allows for the differentiation between two ages of students.
That's the answer I was looking for. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
I guess I'd like to make a motion back on the remuneration. So in the second line, unless the student is designated-
Let's catch up to the second line for the Secretary.
Second line, last paragraph.
Go ahead.
Second line, last paragraph, correct. Unless the student is designated as homebound, as a homebound student, and the tutor is remunerated by and employed by the Board of Education. So we will clarify the remuneration.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly, do you have any, first, is there a second for the motion? Mrs. Lou McCormick. Mrs. Maxine Connolly, do you have any comment on that?
I guess, to me, that's unavoidably redundant, because if you're employed by, you are remunerated by. So I, again, I don't need the clarification, because I understand-
But this isn't you. This is the public reading, this, this is everyone else reading it.
But we come in with our bias. And so for me, it is clear, and saying "paid by" and "employed by" is redundant. So I'm never seeking redundancy, so I don't see the value in making that change. That's my only point.
Okay. So, Mr. Llewellyn, do you wish to make a comment on, in support of your motion?
Well, I do. It's because it's modified by the word "unless." So it's talking about accept remuneration for tutoring, unless, so there's an exception there. Unless the student is designated as a homebound, you could add another sentence, "No remuneration shall be paid by anyone other than the district," but that was more wordy. I tried to go with three words rather than a sentence. And yes, if I had a whole sentence, it would probably be much more clear. But I think that three words may actually get past this, but maybe not.
Okay. So the motion's in front of us. Mrs. Maxine Connolly, do you have any comments, since this is your policy, not yours, but as Chair of the Policy Committee?
The only thing that I think, I guess, just to make clear Mr. Llewellyn's point, is the fact that the second reference is to a tutor and not the teacher, the point that's not clear? In which case, if we changed the word "tutor" to "teacher," then it becomes clear that you're referencing one and the same.
No, because the teacher or the tutor would be, is being modified by the "unless." So it's an exception. So whether it's a teacher or a tutor, they are able to be paid, under my reading of this, by, by anyone, if they're a Board of Ed member, if they're employed by the Board of Education.
Okay. So, any other Board member have a question on this amendment? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Can I suggest a revision to the amendment?
No, you could make an official amendment to the amendment, but we have an amendment on the table, so therefore that has to take precedence.
I can withdraw it, if you'd like to tell me what your language is.
Okay. Yeah, do that, if you're okay with that.
Sure. I'll withdraw my motion, since you seconded it.
Is the Board in unanimous consent that Mr. Llewellyn remove his motion for amendment? Nobody's objection, so it is withdrawn. Now, are you ready with another amendment?
I can propose this amendment, and if people don't like it, then I can withdraw it as well. But why don't I just-
Make the motion.
Make the motion. I'll make the motion for this amendment. So the first sentence, that stay as is, where it says, "No teacher during the school year shall accept remuneration for tutoring students in his or her class," period. Then, however, if a student is designated as a homebound student, a tutor may be employed by the Board of Education. I don't know if that makes it clear.
Can you clarify where the change is in that sentence?
You want to see it?
I will second that.
So, once this gets copied down, I'll ask the Secretary to read the amendment that is in front of us, so the Board is clear on what's in front of us. So the amendment that is in front of us is?
"No teacher during the school year shall accept remuneration for tutoring students in his/her class. However, if a student is designated as a homebound student, a tutor may be employed by the Board of Education."
Is the Board understanding of that? Is there a second for that, as it's written? Llewellyn has seconded it. Any further discussion from Mrs. Lou McCormick or Mr. Llewellyn on the motion?
I actually think that's a lot better put than the way I had it. So, no, I appreciate that.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, do you have any comment?
My comment is simply, I want to make absolute certain that this represents the practice of the district. I don't otherwise have a problem with the wording change, but again, I want to make sure that there's, sometimes there's a nuance to a word or a reason for a phrasing that's not occurring to me. And so before I vote on it, to Dr. Jones, or through Dr. Jones, to any staff member who's actually implementing this, if that amendment reflects the practice of the district.
I believe it does.
Yes.
With that answered, do you have any objection to this amendment?
I do not.
Okay. Any other comments from Board members concerning this amendment to the original motion? So let me go out to the public. This is a comment on the amendment, and amendment only. Any members of the public that wish to make a comment on the amendment to the homebound hospital instruction policy, please come forward. Mr. Smoller?
Yeah, thank you. Bob Smoller. In this case, I'm speaking as a math teacher. And I would like to just give you the consideration that we do have students who are not designated as homebound students who miss a quarter or a semester because of illness or injury over the course of the year. And the only way that they can get the graduation credit they need to complete that course is to get some tutoring paid for by the parent, or, you know, if they're designated by the Board that's willing to pay for it, then that works as well. But I can think of two instances right now where students with illness or injury are being tutored to try to catch up, because they were not able to come to school to receive their instruction. And in those instances, I just, you know, sometimes the classroom teacher is the best person to do that tutoring, since they've been their instructor for the portion of the year that the student could attend class. So what I might suggest to you is that you keep the language that Mrs. Lou McCormick has recommended, but maybe add something to say they can do it with the permission of the superintendent where appropriate. And that would give the flexibility to handle these kinds of situations as they come up. I have a student like this right now that is receiving it officially. Thank you.
Back to the Board. I'll only make one comment. The idea of trying to wordsmith a policy that's been in front of us and do it at the last minute at a Board meeting without advance notice to people, I don't think that's good process. So even if the Chair of the Policy Committee were to be happy with this by an instant answer on the fly, I don't think I can vote for this, simply because the law of unintended consequences, you never know when this subtle change then has some impact that nobody expected. Mr. Llewellyn, were you going to raise your hand? Mrs. Maxine Connolly?
I will be in favor of the amendment, but I would like to use this moment to reiterate what Chairman Dwyer just said. It's really important I get these comments ahead of time. I ask it every meeting. Please may I get the comments and questions ahead of time? I don't like to surprise staff with it. I'm not, if it's not something we explicitly discussed in committee, then I am not prepared always to speak to it. And especially because this can involve legal situations, I need to be prepared. So I would like to emphatically reiterate to this Board, please get me the questions ahead of time. I don't want to assume that a small question is not a big deal. I understand that on the first reading that that's not always possible. You might want to look at it once, and then you take a second chance. But I can't agree more, I will be in favor of the amendment. I do think that the wording works fine. I'm willing to do that. And only with Dr. Jones's assurance that this does reflect our practice do I feel comfortable going ahead with this. But I would repeat, please, this is not the process I ask for every meeting. I never assume it's what anyone will do. I say it every time.
Thank you. Back to the Board for a vote. This is a vote on the amendment, and the amendment only. Do any Board members need to understand the amendment that's in front of us?
I'll just read the full paragraph. "No teacher during the school year shall accept remuneration for tutoring students in his/her class. However, if a student is designated as a homebound student, a tutor may be employed by the Board of Education."
All are understanding? All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Pitco, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Connolly, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed? I'm sorry, Mr. Patton voted in favor as well. All opposed, Mr. Dwyer. The motion passes seven to one. Those four policies are adopted. Thank you very much. Oh, no, the main motion, sorry. Now the main motion as amended, this is a voting item as a main motion as amended. So we go out to the public. Any member of the public wish to come forward and talk on this main motion? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Ms. McCall, one twenty-three Ragate Road. While I appreciate the intent of the policy, and I think it's a strong policy, I think the last speaker kind of highlighted it. There's a disconnect between this policy and the process. If kids are coming down and getting hit with a concussion, the response time of getting tutor and process in motion to help these students while it's outlined in this policy is not necessarily hitting the parent and student. And I have a problem that if a child is out due to a concussion, or mononucleosis, or Lyme disease, or something that is a medical condition, that parents should have to pay a member of the district to tutor their child to keep them up to speed. The intent of the policy is that that's what the district is doing. My concern is that the intent of this policy and the process in place are not necessarily meeting up. And that's why I hope we can get this process and the policy back in line, so that parents aren't paying for tutoring when their children are unable to attend school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward? Seeing none, back to the Board for a vote. Actually, Mr. Dwyer.
Please, I have a comment. I was going to make the motion a second ago, but I do think that Mr. Smoller brings up a good point, that if the superintendent does pre-approve it in writing, that there shouldn't be a problem. We should not do that to the exclusion. But what we don't want is people doing it just kind of off, kind of the reservation, so to speak. So I would like to get a sense of the Board as to whether or not people would be willing to entertain that addition to the language that was just approved. willing to entertain that addition to the language that was just approved.
If you state the language specifically, so that we can poll the board?
Uh, I believe it would be to add a comment, unless approved by the superintendent in writing, but I don't know, I, I'd have to hear back the exact words.
Any, uh, if board members are aware, any comments from, uh, board members regarding a, um, amendment by consensus, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Um, I completely understand Mr. Smoller's point, um, and appreciate that Mr. Llewellyn is picking it up. However, I can only speak of my own experience and practice, which is, when a student is out, whether you're contacted by the parent, more often it's by the guidance counselor saying, "This, you need to be aware of this situation with this child who will be out this long, we are working," whether they, in some cases, get an official 504, in which case, the teachers will be governed by that as they work, or whether you're asked simply to work with the student, um, it's, I entirely empathize, because sometimes it can be an awful lot of extra work, but to me, it's part of my job, I have to do that. Um, I would not be in favor of starting to open the door, and therefore, open the door for Dr. Jones to starting to decide, "Well, in this case, this teacher should be paid extra for this tutoring position, um, but in that case, no," it, it's, I wouldn't even begin to know how to set the criteria for determining which parents are in a position where you're going to have to pay for that tutor, versus, "This is what the teacher is going to have to work out in his or her own time." And, please understand, I would love the idea of there being such a thing as overtime pay for teachers, because, man, would I be rich! But, um, it, it's, I just, I can't imagine the criteria you could set so that parents would be assured that this was going to be done, uh, fairly, and it, it is absolutely no way impugning teachers, I, as a teacher, I can't imagine how they could come up with that criteria for myself. Um, you know, they want to take a, a point, one of my, uh, teaching load, one of my billets off, and I become the tutor for that child, well, that's something, that's a whole different arrangement. Um, but actually involving an exchange of cash for my own student, I just, I, but if a thought is interesting, I cannot see how it can be done fairly.
Other, uh, uh, members wish to make a comment, Mrs. Lumicormick?
So, in response to that, is it our understanding, then, by approving the language as it is, that in fact, the case that was cited should not in fact be taking place, where a student should be, in fact, paying outside cash to a teacher to tutor them in the event of a coma, or whatever kind of concussion, or, not coma, concussion?
Coma would be some very subliminal tutoring.
That'd be really bad. So, some, some sort of an event where they were out at school, so is that how we should be reading this at this point, that we shouldn't be having that type of activity going on in the district? I guess I want to understand what this policy tells us we should be doing.
What the policy is saying is that, well, again, just straight up, and, and so, aside from any situation of homebound or hospital, teachers cannot be paid to tutor their own students, again, because of the inherent conflict of interest that that could potentially set someone up for, accused of fairly or not. For the student who is coming back from the concussion, again, the tutoring with your own teacher is something that a parent then should not be asked, that you are paying for the tutoring for your own child in the subject in which your child is enrolled. Now, that's not to say that a parent might not say, "I would like something to supplement that, the number of hours that that teacher has in his or her schedule, I would like to accelerate that." There are then other, I mean, never mind that there are math learning centers and other ways to get additional help, um, but if a parent so decided to pay a tutor, it's simply that it cannot be the teacher by whom their child is being educated. And while I recognize the inherent flaw in that of, "Well, who best knows the curriculum and this teach, this student's strengths and weaknesses," then the teacher who is teaching that student, I completely hear that, um, but it is setting up tremendous potential for conflict of interest.
I hear, oh.
Okay, so, Mrs. Lumicormick, you want to have a follow-up?
So, I guess I can agree with that as well. I mean, I can see both sides of it, I guess my concern is that we implement this consistently, and that if we're going to do it one way, we do it one way, and then that is the policy of the district. So, I guess my question then to Dr. Jones is that, is how Ms. Cannelli just described it, how we, as a district, will then implement this policy going forward, and then the cases as recited should no longer occur, and that is, in fact, outside, um, compensation should not be occurring for a teacher by his student, even if the student is out for some period of time for some sickness or injury? And that's the question, I'm sorry, through the chair to Dr. Jones.
Dr. Jones, do you want to, Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think it goes back to looking at the policy on the very first paragraph, where it talks about a student who is out for a period of two weeks or longer due to verified medical, uh, but it also talks about if they're absent from school for short, repeated periods of time, generally for students who have a concussion, for instance, those students will miss a lot of class, so, I, I don't think, it's not necessarily a conflict of interest, I believe, in what our, our speaker shared, I think it may be a, uh, looking at our practice and how we are actually determining who needs a tutor and who does not, um, and making sure that that process is very clear.
I guess the question really is, is should the parents be paying the teacher outside, or should it be that the district is compensating the teacher for making up the work?
If it's, if it's a student who, for instance, has some medical issue and they're out for two weeks or longer, or it is a short repeated period, we should be providing that. If the parent chooses to hire a tutor, it just shouldn't be just for extra tutoring, which often parents will do, it shouldn't be the teacher who has that child in their classroom every day.
Any, uh, comment on that, Mrs. Pitco? Ms. Pitco, my apologies.
I wanted to answer that, but also answer to John, because he asked whether I was in favor of supporting it. I have to agree with Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, because I have been a tutor to students, I've also been a tutor paid by the district for homebound instruction, I actually did that for many years, um, especially to kids that were expelled. But, I've also offered my services to my current students after school, not for pay, just to help them. They're asking something very specific. If the student is on, you know, a medical leave or a homebound tuner, then the district should pay for it. If the kid wants extra help, I can choose to offer myself after school unpaid, or the parent can choose, like Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli said, to go to one of these other places to get tutoring. But, I think, like you said, we have to be very clear, which is why I agreed with the amendment, the original amendment.
And, uh, Mr. Llewellyn, for the same reason I don't like to edit on the run, um, I would not be supporting the, uh, an amendment if you put it forward.
Uh, yeah, and that's why I went out for sense of the body, and I appreciate everyone's input. I, I think, you know, listening to the teachers, that's kind of what they want, so, I was responding to what I had heard, and want to make sure we vet it first.
Okay, so you have no amendment to put forward at this time, thank you. So, if the board is ready to vote, all in favor of the main motion as amended, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with eight people here. Okay, uh, we are now up to item seven, uh, which is, uh, first reading of new course, Computer Science Principles. Dr. Boyce said, uh, I don't see any screens, so we have the, an attachment in the packet, but, uh, you'll speak to us from the podium, so we can stay here.
Dr. Meg Boyce, Director Secondary Ed. As the board knows, we typically do not send you, um, new courses for approval outside of the regular renewal process, but about a year ago, Mr. Paul Zatomi, who's a business teacher at Fairfield Ward, brought this course to my attention, and I believed it was important enough that we not wait about four years when, when the business department curriculum would come before you again. Last year, the, um, College Board added a new AP exam on AP Computer Principles, and as, um, I looked at the course and listened to Mr. Zatomi explain it to me, it, it's a, it was apparent that it was a course that would add greatly to our, our program of studies, and would appeal to a large variety of students, and really encourage them to perhaps take more courses in computer science and, and various STEM subjects. Um, the course only requires Algebra I, it can be taken concurrently with AP Computer Science before it or after it. We have staff already in our schools who can teach it. It requires no, uh, budgetary support, we don't need to purchase anything, equipment or textbooks to offer it, and I believe it would, um, be appealing to a lot of students, especially as you recall with the, um, eighth grade course we now offer in coding. I think there'd be many ninth and 10th graders who would be interested in taking this course. So, Mr. Zatomi and I met with the headmasters and the housemasters who oversee unsupervised business, um, they agreed that it would be a good course to include. I presented it to, um, Dr. Jones, and also with the Curriculum Council, uh, who reviewed, uh, the curriculum document that you see in your packet. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Zatomi to talk a little bit about the content of the course, and why he believes it would be valuable for us to offer it.
And this is enclosure number one in your packet.
Good af- good evening, board. Uh, my name is Paul Zatomi, I'm a teacher at Fairfield Ward High School, I'm a business computer science teacher there. Uh, Boyce had mentioned that I did bring this to our attention. I am also the AP Computer Science teacher at Ward High School as well.
Talk closer to the microphone.
Is that better? Uh, about ten years ago or so, AP College Board asked, uh, the computer science teachers their opinion, um, on a new course, and, um, we gave it to them, and we didn't think they were going to take our opinion to heart, and they did. They created a app, mobile-based course, completely free, uh, to schools, uh, that attracts, uh, the younger generation into computer science, and looks at a bigger picture of computer science than just Java, which is the AP Computer Science. And, that's basically it. Uh, it is outlined in, um, page two of the draft, um, it gets from the basics of getting started, what is a computer, to more advanced things. It is also project, completely project-based, uh, online, um, and, uh, the software comes from MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, uh, the curriculum, for the most part, um, comes from Trinity College, and is one of the approved curriculums, uh, by the College Board.
Thank you, any other comments, Dr. Boyce? No? Questions or comments from the board members, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, I guess one question I had is, so, is this an AP course, or not? Because I know it says AP test optional, I just wasn't sure, like, what level course will it be?
When we met with the, uh, headmasters and housemasters, we debated whether we should offer it as an AP course or not, and of course, students can take the AP exam without taking an AP designated course. And, after much discussion, we, we decided as a group, we would prefer not to offer it as an AP course as a beginning, because we wanted to make sure that students were, were really, um, going to sign up for it, and not be turned away or discouraged by the AP designation. So, our recommendation is that we offer it without the AP designation for now, uh, monitor it over the next year or so, and see how the student response to it is, and then determine whether we, in fact, want to make it, um, into an AP designated course. But, students can take it and still take the AP exam at the end of the course.
Okay, and then, another question I had, um, which you answered, is, the only prerequisite is Algebra I, so, basically, any grade could take this class, as long as they've taken Algebra I?
That is correct, yes.
Um, okay, and, um, so I guess, no, is this going to be for this coming school year?
It's, uh, it's in the program of studies with a designation pending board approval, so, um, if the board approves it, it will be available to students who requested it in the fall.
And have, has there been, uh, like, how, approximately how many requests?
I know at Ward, we have one, at least one class full, uh, for the requests, I'm not sure at Luggo, what they request is.
We'll find out, we'll find out and get back to you. Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Patton?
Normal AP courses, to take the exam, and most of the course preparation, because the exams are in early May, you know, take place during that timeframe, um, so, and according to your, your pacing guide, um, you know, you've got basically, you know, units seven and eight that might miss the boat on that. How would, if a student, let's say this coming year, even though it wasn't designated an AP class, if the student wanted to take the AP exam, would that student be prepared? And how does that work either now or going forward, if the course designation changed?
Uh, Unit seven, uh, is an eight-week course, and it starts off around month, seven or eight, it, it's sort of an optional unit for the AP exam, and as long as, the same with, uh, the last, the programming task, which is the, uh, Create Programming Program Test Number Two. Uh, the uniqueness of this course is all the students' work is posted on a Google site, and then that site is given to the College Board, uh, for review, so, in the summertime, so, basically, they can work until the end of the school year, even though the test is a month or six weeks before the end of the school year.
So, I'm confused a little bit, so, okay, so, normally, the College Boards would see that just the AP exam scores, correct?
No, not in this case.
So, uh, so whether this course was designated AP or not, this, the College Boards see the score of the test plus the work through the end of the school year?
That is correct. That's my understanding of it, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what's confusing.
And that's at the student's option, I presume?
That is correct, yes. Uh, if the student decided, uh, we had discussed this with the housemasters, uh, to take the AP test, then I would make sure that they're, as the AP Computer Science Principal Teacher, to make sure that their website is, uh, set up, their portfolio on their website is set up as such, to be presented to the College Board for grading.
Okay, and, but again, back to my original question, so, between the, the, their website, the classwork that's online and presented to the College Boards, and the exam itself, would that information, would the student have all the information they needed to succeed in those tasks by the time the exam is administered?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions for, uh, uh, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Um, all right, well, some, several of my questions are already, at what point, I assume that the teachers themselves, or teacher, in this case, if they, it ends up being just the one section, um, because January is when they ask for that AP payment, um, are they going to be encouraged even in year one, if you see a student who seems to be, you know, nailing this, that they would proactively, because obviously, students did not sign, probably most of them did not sign up thinking AP, would they then be encouraged to do so? Or are you really going to take the first year of, "We really need to learn from this one before we foray into that"?
I was going to pull aside, uh, my higher-scoring students that looked like they were on the ball, basically, and say, "You might take this as an optional AP exam, if you're interested in doing the AP work."
Okay.
And then, of course, prep them that they would have to have a complete project done by the end of, the end of the school year, uh, and the portfolio updated.
Okay, um, and I also just want to clarify the nature of this, of the curriculum. What are we having to write, or is it absolutely nothing? Has it been entirely, and we are just getting handed this course, um, I mean, not that you wouldn't have looked it over, and I, obviously, that, I, all, the way this is formatted, had to have been done by you.
Yes.
But, obviously, we know summer curriculum work is going to be an issue for us this summer, but you're saying, "This is ready to hit the ground because everything is already done, all the projects done, the assessment's already prepared"?
Uh, there are several schools in the area that are also offering this as an AP, uh, course, uh, New Canaan is one of them, um, Jonathan Law, I went to visit a couple of years ago when this was, uh, still in development, and I think Trumbull High School is using it, this is a, this school year was the first year of an AP course. So, I have a lot of colleagues in, outside the district, uh, that have had reference to, that I can reference to, uh, as far as pacing, et cetera, et cetera.
But if you didn't spend one hour this summer on curriculum work, this is ready to hit the ground running?
I, I plan to spend my summer in Cape Cod.
Outstanding, outstanding!
Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, but I know you're gonna, I know you're gonna be playing on some apps, on that, so, um, okay, thank you. And, I was wondering, for the, um, the middle school students who did take the coding class, is there any part of this, then, that's redundant, or this just so quickly accelerates past what that nine-week course did, that-
I, I believe it, it is, it accelerates past it, but is not as advanced as the current AP Computer Science A course.
Okay, how redundant is this going to be if a student took this and then said, "Wait a minute, this really is my interest, now I want to take that AP Computer Science course"? In other words, do you see one of the, one of the two getting phased out?
No.
Eventually, I mean, I, I know that's put in the cart before the horse, but-
This would, I'm assuming by the College Board, this would, at some top point, and this is a big assumption, I mean, um, that, uh, they would require this as one of the prerequisites for the AP Computer Science A non-class.
Okay.
That's been in place for years.
Um, and then, well, you already answered my question about the staff and the budget, so, um, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you very much for the, uh, description here, I think I, the course looks like a great course. Uh, could you-
Could you share with the board a link to the actual curriculum, since it's kind of out there already and been developed?
The curriculum is on the Trinity website. Actually, it's, I know off the top of my head, it's mobile-csp. It's from Trinity, it's hosted by Trinity.
Mobile-csp, Computer Science Principles.org, I believe. Dot u, dot org? Perfect, thank you. And that's, the whole thing is just right at that link?
Right there.
Perfect.
Videos, everything included, the software's through MIT, you can download it right off of the Trinity site, Trinity University site, and it's basically, really nothing that they even download, it's all just web-based. We use our Google accounts, that's been approved by the school system, student Google accounts, just log on, and students create separate accounts.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Mrs. Lumacormick, do you want to follow up on that question?
Sort of. But I'm fine with reading.
Lumacormick, you mind?
Just out of curiosity, when, when, reading through the information you presented, it looks really interesting, but kind of skill-based. Are they actually going to learn how to write algorithms?
Yes.
And, so is this more of a kind of mathematical, like, how to use, like, being able to embed or nest stuff within Excel? Or are you actually teaching them, you're not teaching them a language, a coding language?
In this case, we are.
Oh, you are?
The course in itself is not language-bound. The College Board gives teachers a lot of freedom into choosing which language to choose, to teach the course in. The app inventor by MIT, and also Google, which Google supports, is a GUI interface language, it's a drop and drag-and-drop language. So you have these blocks on, on the website, and you just build the routines. I don't know if the board has heard of Hour of Coding, the big program by all the world leaders of, you know, technology companies, but it's based off of that, those skills as well.
Is this like Scratch?
Yes, Scratch would be one of the coding IDEs that we can use as well.
So then, it will be what language the kids use is determined classroom by classroom, or is that going to be part of the curriculum as to what we're going to use consistently across the district, or are you...
Unfortunately, Scratch had it downloaded, you can't use that online. So I tried to look for an all-inclusive online course, and this one was one of the options that was allotted to me through the College Board.
Okay. And so then, the idea is by the end, they should be able to put together, what are they going to put together, then?
They have two major projects in which they have of their own creation. It's Apple App invention project, or mobile app, they use tablets or their phones if they want to. And whatever comes out of their mind, that's PG-13 acceptable, that's a classroom requirement. And we go from there.
Oh, so they could create a game, or an app, or whatever? Really, there's, there's no constraint? You're not teaching, that they can take it in whatever direction?
That is correct, yes.
Interesting, okay.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
He answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions from board members on this? If not, this will be on the agenda for vote and action at the next regular board meeting. As always, if you have questions that have occurred to you since, please get to the staff so that they can either be ready at the board table or can answer your questions in advance. Thank you very much for bringing this course forward to us.
Thank you.
So now, we are on item eight, discussion of the 2017-18 budget. Dr. Jones will make some comments, but let me just outline to make sure that, I hope the board is understanding that the approach that we're taking is to leave these items in the budget, not only because it maintains a base of budget support, and if we don't maintain them in the budget, then we end up having to get that money back the next year, and every percent increase is difficult to get. And so therefore, this is a list that is in front of you for discussion, and determine whether the board wants to say, by consensus, we understand these items and leave it to management to manage it over the summer and early fall, based on what action the state takes, or whether you would want to do this by vote, which would be a little bit more constraining, if you will. So, Dr. Jones, you want to make comments?
Yeah, we don't actually have the Tier One, Tier Two in your packets, I don't believe, tonight. What you have in front of you is the one-page sheet that Ms. Nunsell has put together for you, just to show you basically where we are to help with the understanding. I think you know that we don't know what's happening at the state level. So where our recommended budget, at the top of the sheet, started at $168,757. We had $2 million that was taken out, but it was $2,033,000. And then when you look at the Board of Selectmen at $2 million, where, that actually was put back in at the Board of Finance, and then the RTM-approved amount was $168,724. So right now, if you look below that, when we approved the budget in June, we're only down that $33,000. I think it's really important, you know, to note that, because we talk about lots of reductions that could be, but right now, we really don't know what we don't know. Below that, the only other caveat that we know that's different than the last time we met is our pension is $129,000 higher on the contribution than was budgeted in the approved budget. And Ms. Nunsell, if you have questions for her, she certainly could answer that. But this is not, and I just want to kind of caution us to not let that look really scary, these sorts of number changes, from the time we approve a budget until we get to September, there are going to be changes. We may need to hire two teachers because class sizes go up. We may have a teacher that leaves and we don't need to replace the teacher, so it may be a positive. But these are just changes, making sure that you're aware of where we actually are. Down on the bottom, when you look at that 17-18, it just gives you an idea of what Mr. Cullen has for you in maintenance accounts and projects. And he did provide the memo for you that gives you more specificity on that, and you can actually see what those items are that are just simply on hold. And that just means that we've had to make some thoughtful decisions going into the summer, what do you do in July, what do you do in August, maybe some of the projects we couldn't do anyway because we needed to go out to bid, they were going to take a little bit more time. This is really just, I feel like a safety net for the board to know that we're being very thoughtful in central office, trying to make sure that if we get a million-dollar reduction all of a sudden in, you know, July, that we're not anticipating, because nobody knows what's happening, that we have already really identified, after looking at, you know, three pages of projects and accounts, what are those projects that we're either not going to do this summer, that we could have done this summer, or we could have done, you know, later in the year? Or what are those projects that we don't even have planned until the spring of '18, going into that June? And that just tells us, okay, this is, this is the easier number to look at for a safety cushion. This is really just keeping you informed that we're being proactive and trying to make sure that we're being very thoughtful and being prepared for the summer, not knowing really what's going to happen at the state level.
Okay. Any comments or discussion from the board on the approach that we're taking, or the items listed in the two handouts, one that was sent to you in the Friday packet and one that's in front of you tonight? Mrs. Gerber?
Yes, through the chair to Dr. Jones. Thank you for this information. I guess one question I have is, you know, when we got that kind of revised Tier One, Tier Two, with the yellow and the orange?
Right.
Is this, you know, because not everything that's on the memo that we got from Mr. Cullen last week, is, there are other things on here, like the summer curriculum work, professional development, allocation reduction, those things, are those still up in the air? Are those...
Those are still items that we would not anticipate that we would spend this summer in case we need them. Because we still, right now, just with the two special education issues, there's still $2 million we really don't know. That's not counting anything else that might flow through the town side that could, could have an impact for us, we just don't know. So those items are still what we would just consider, they're frozen right now. It doesn't mean we're not necessarily going to do them, and we hope that we can. But again, it's just trying to be thoughtful, looking everywhere we can inside the budget to say, we've at least identified this amount of funding that we have on hold going into June and July, just so that we are not in shock in July if we have a $2 million hole and we're scrambling trying to fix it, because you've already done all these projects and put things in motion that you can't undo.
Okay. And then I guess the other question, because you had, like, the two PE position, the bus reduction, so are those still happening?
Yes. I will say on the PE, that one is actually a .5 at each high school. They actually looked at their entire master schedule, and instead of having to take both of those from the PE department, they did a .5 and a .5 from each high school, and then they had some other areas that, so it's the same dollar amount.
Okay.
But where they didn't need sections for another area.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Okay, I have another question.
So perhaps in June, this page highlights the maintenance accounts that are on hold, but we should add the other accounts that are listed on, in yellow, to this page, so there's a complete list of everything that you're on hold. Am I stating this correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, and then I guess another question I had, because, and you actually mentioned, you know, that we may have to add staff, you know, with class sections. And I just was wondering if you could give us a sense on the elementary level of where we are now, you know, because there were quite a few, I mean, I went through the budget book, and there are quite a few that were within, just a few students of needing an additional section in elementary school. I mean, some schools have, like, two or three grades that might need an additional section. And I was just wondering how that kind of plays into all of these numbers here. And, and I'm also, forgive me, I can't remember, at what point is kind of like the drop-dead point by which you do have to determine how many sections you're having? Is it August 1st, or just, I just, I can't quite remember exactly when that fell, but I guess just, you know, where are we now? Are there any classes that have, actually, that will need an additional section that we already know of? Or are there some that, you know, because I know when you built the budget, you know, we've had more students come into elementary school, so are we now at any school already over that, whatever that threshold is to needing another section? Or are we headed in that direction? And if so, how many sections are we looking at?
Yeah, it is still too early to actually look at that. We knew going into the budget, there were 13 sections where you were one or two students from going up or down. And until we actually get into the summer, we don't make those decisions. And one thing we will do this year is be incredibly thoughtful before school starts, and really make sure that if we think we have 22 children in a class, we're going to have to confirm with all 22 of those families that they are indeed still here. And that can happen right up until when school gets ready to start, as long as we feel like we can still hire a great teacher for the children.
Okay. Well, I guess, so, just to kind of piggyback on that, so if we know, though, at some point between now and, say, August 1st, that we do have a class, a kindergarten class, say, that has 24 students, or we know that we have a fourth-grade class or a third-grade class that has 26 students, will there be an additional teacher hired? Like, we're not, are we, are we going to continue to make sure that we stay within those Board of Ed guidelines? I know it's not a policy, per se, but it's been something that, you know, the board, and I think the district and parents kind of expect. So, you know, I just think it's important that if we think that we may end up in a position where we would have classes going over, and I understand, once you get into the school year, students come in, sometimes you do end up going over that threshold, that 23 or 25 threshold. But between now and August 1st, can we assure parents that we're not going to go over that number?
I think when we know more about the budget, I think that's going to be a discussion for the board, because what we have traditionally done is if we have 22, 22, 22, and one student moves in, we add a full section for one class that's 23. What most districts would do is you would have the one over, you'd have 23, 23, 23, and then you would add the section. And that's a different way of looking at it, and it really, you know, obviously has huge budgetary implications. And, you know, it isn't, like you say, policy-driven, because our policy's actually quite large. So that will be something going into the fall. We, I have to, you know, see if the board, in fact, is comfortable with that. Instead of one child over on a grade level, we're going to add a full teacher position. Or is it each section on a third grade needs to be one over, and then that's when you add the teacher?
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just think, you know, because we're kind of running out of time, because we don't meet in July.
Right.
And so we've got two meetings in June, basically, and then by the time we come back, it's the end of August, so whatever decisions are made, have been made. So I just think it's really important that if this is something that you or the administration is going to be suggesting, that we actually do look at these numbers and maybe, you know, are asked to be flexible with them, I think it's really important that, you know, the public understands that, because it would be a shame to come back and have a number of classes that are, you know, 26, you know, kids, that, you know, we were assuming that, because we always discuss, class size always comes up during the budget. And it's something that, you know, as long as I've been coming to Board of Ed meetings, you know, it's come up sometimes as a possibility, well, we may have to look at that. And there's been a lot of pushback, both from board members, from, from parents and whatnot, and so I'm just concerned that, you know, people are going to go away for the summer and think that we're in one place, and they're going to come back, and we're going to have these large class sizes. And again, once the school year starts, I get, you know, but you could end up even with 27 kids in a class, because you have, you know, we had 26 elementary students move in throughout the course of the year. So if we're already starting over, then we could have even bigger class sizes, which I think would be problematic, at least personally, I'm just speaking for myself, so.
Other questions from board members on this? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
Just a couple of brief ones. And I apologize that I can't do this off the top of my head, but the, I don't know, Dr. Jones, if you know this, or Mr. Cullen, eh, he is. Whenever I see roofing, that gets my attention. I just can't remember what this, and it's only $10,000, I just can't remember what roofing is in reference to, and I never like thinking that we're not doing roofing work, that if it's been identified as a need. So I was just wondering about that.
I don't think I have to remind you to state your name and position.
Yes. For the record, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations. I'm glad you picked this one, because this is good news. The Roofing Preventive Maintenance Program, we've been doing for over 10 years. We're starting to get feedback from the contractors that we're doing very well. Our roofs are in good shape. We probably could look at a reduction moving forward of about $10,000 or $15,000, so we put $10,000 on the...
So this isn't a project being held off?
No.
This is, it's not needed?
Correct.
Ah, very good. And then likewise, the hazardous materials project. Never like to think we're skimping on taking care of hazardous materials.
This account is used for areas that could pop up during the year where a vinyl asbestos tile is in a classroom or in a teacher's office that maybe gets cracked or crumbling, and we have to go investigate it.
So this would not be something that, the waiting over the summer, this isn't a summer project, then, that's being held?
No.
This is something over the course of the year, so if we don't get the huge hit that we're trying to prepare for, that money would then still be there, and it would be used, and it's fine during the school year?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for the projects themselves, I was wondering if there's any particular project that was especially near and dear to you, because you know of the tough state it's in?
All of them.
I know, again, having, having seen that Lago parking lot, it really, obviously, all of them, but, you know, is there, are there any that would be able to, all right, let me change the question.
Yeah.
Are there any that can be done during the school year, so that if the summer hit is not that full amount, we will, because, again, talk about the phrase kicking the can down the road, these are just going to need to be added to the next budget, they're not going away. So which of these, if the money is there, will be able to be done while the school is in session?
Probably only one, the Fairfield Ward High School Naps Highway Tennis Courts. All the others are going to require engineering or architectural drawings going up to bid, hazardous material cleanup, indoor air quality testing, all that kind of stuff. But they are all dear to my heart.
I should have known better than to phrase it that way. Okay, thank you.
I will say that, Mr. Cullen, no matter which board member asked you about if they're all important, you have consistently said they're all important.
Yes, I keep a running list in my office of ones, twos, and threes, the ones make the list on the board.
Other questions from board members on this list, recognizing that this list, plus essentially the ones in yellow that are not listed here, will form the total list. Mr. Llewellyn?
Perfect. Actually, first, questions from Mr. Cullen while we have you. You've got $100,000 here for paving and sidewalking curbs. My question about the curbs, I think this year, they did an especially good job of knocking them out of the parking lots. Does the contractor pay to reinstall everything he knocked out, or...
Yes, they do. They have to go around and pick up all the broken curbs and ones that are spread out in the field. They damage the light pole at Riverfield, and they damaged a couple of signs. We went over and gave them a whole list. They've been picking up all the damaged material, and they do have to reinstall the new.
Okay, perfect.
This account is $150,000 right now, we were holding $100 on the side.
Okay, perfect. I was curious about who paid for the damage.
No.
It did seem to be more extensive. I did like the way they got well into the field, though, when they threw it.
No, they did last year, too. They did a great job cleaning up and replacing it all. 870 lineal feet of curbing they destroyed.
There you go. Okay, thank you. There you go. Okay, thank you. And I guess my next question is about the process. And, Mr. Dwyer, you had mentioned, you know, were we gonna kind of vote line by line, or were we going to kind of do it on consent? And I'm not even sure what your, what question you're asking. Because I have a sheet of paper here that doesn't have the details behind it that were provided, say, in the last meeting. So what specifically are you asking of the board, please?
So if you take the sheet that has all the yellow on it...
And that's where?
Was handed out at the last two, several meetings, but the last meeting.
But it's not here today?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will take those items from, that are in yellow that are not listed on here, and add them to this list. So that at the June meeting, when you vote, or you accept, depending on which the board wishes, do, the total list of items that will be on hold for next year will be shown to you. Okay? Then, under, I'll say, normal circumstances, when the superintendent tells us that there are some shortfalls, and that they have to place a hold on certain expenses in order to ensure that we balance our budget, the superintendent provides that list to us. We thank them, we accept the list by consensus, and we don't necessarily vote on it, because we consider that to be one of management's function to balance the budget if there are shortfalls. So the suggestion is that we follow that same process. Thank you for the list, and allow the superintendent to manage that list based on what she hears from the state. And if she has to greatly differ from that list, she'll update it, I'm sure, in August or however long, because that's also a normal process that when we're facing a deficit, the sheet is updated on a regular basis, so that we're aware of what decisions are being made. On the alternative, if the board wanted to, we could vote this, the, not this particular list, but the one I described that will include all of the items in yellow, we could vote that at the next meeting. But then that would more constrict the superintendent to only use that list, and if found savings someplace else naturally that would allow her to release some funds, she'd have to get board action on it. So, Mr. Llewellyn, as you might imagine, I am always in favor of giving flexibility to management to manage the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're paid to do that, and we're not. Does that help you understand the process?
It does. And you're gonna be looking for input on that question at the next meeting.
Yes.
Not at this meeting.
Yeah.
At the next meeting.
Um...
When we have it in front of us. And I guess my request is, and I've asked this a couple of times, as we go through things that are handed out in prior meetings, can we always have a hundred percent of the attachments at the table? So if we happen to grab the wrong folder, we actually have a reference to what's in there. For a while, I carried six inches of paper with me from all past files. But if, if we're gonna be referencing something off of another, it's another couple sheets of paper. It doesn't need to be in color. But I don't like referencing things from past meetings that I may or may not have in front of me.
I understand. Our, our practice...
I know, and I'm asking...
I don't like to hear this, but our practice is to not waste paper and make duplicate copies of things that we've already given to board members. So we, we do not duplicate the policies that we're voting on a second time. We don't duplicate the curriculum documents that are often long.
Oh, that, you don't need to, right?
A second time, so, so...
And I guess our practice should be to vote on a fully informed basis. So if we could have copies of the shorter things in front of us, it would be appreciated.
And, and you are fully informed, because you've been given it to...
Yep.
In past meetings. And it depends on whether this board wanted to kill some more trees.
Okay, and I guess this will be through the chair to the superintendent. If you could please see that we have copies of especially financial type information from prior meetings that will be expected to discuss, that it's available, that'd be great. I understand Phil's past practice.
The board's past practice. Mr. Llewellyn, that's the board's past practice.
Except by the chair, you're right.
Not the superintendent's. It's been the board's past practice. Any other questions on this list? Per Mr. Llewellyn's earlier comment, is there any comments that people wish to make regarding whether we will accept this by consensus, or whether the board will want to vote on this list at the next meeting? Recognizing the only other budget, budget vote that will be required is eventually a recommendation on what to do with that thirty-three thousand. It's a fairly small amount, but it will have to be actually acted upon, so that our budget number matches the town's approved budget number. Mr. Asa?
So if we were to vote, as you say, would that mean that the superintendent would have to come back to the board to make any changes or adjustments to that?
Yes, that would mean, my interpretation would be, that these items are on hold, and if, if she found savings in some other area, for whatever purpose, then, and wanted to take this off and pick some item, I think that would have to come back to the board for a vote. Anytime the board votes on something and it changes substantially, I think the board is owed an opportunity to re-vote, if you will.
And if we left it and accepted it, as you mentioned, Dr. Jones would have the discretion and the, I guess, management aspect to handle it?
Yeah, within, within reason, it would probably not be wise for the superintendent to change the entire list and start working on another list without informing the board. You know, so it gives us some discretion, but not total, you know, cock launch. Mrs. Maxon Cunnily?
And I don't know if this would help Mr. Say, but, so the notion be, say if, okay, ridiculous example, but out of the blue, we have fifteen fewer elementary school sections than we budgeted for, that's suddenly money in play that would mean that something that was on that list now would not have to be sacrificed, and that decision could be made in central office and not have to come back to a board. That money then would be available for her discretion. My only question is regarding, in, in general, I would defer to the management of Dr. Jones. However, one thing that I am curious about is what we're looking at for this thirty-three thousand. For example, and I know it's not a, the largest of numbers, but I was very keen, as one example, of I wanna see some recognition that we will be seeing energy savings with the solar. That that is, that was not money that was counted on when we approved the budget. It is money that we will be saving, even estimating conservatively. So if I knew something like that was gonna be factored into thirty-three thousand, that's one thing. If it, if it were not, then that maybe would put something else that, that was in yellow. No, we can go ahead with that. You know, maybe there's some small aspect of curriculum work, that, you know what, this would really be near and dear. We'd like to do something with this with elementary school math, and that gives us five thousand dollars to do it, as an example. So I would be, so to Mr. Dwyer's point, I'm, I'm not saying that I necessarily wanna make it a voting item. I might, however, question some of the items on the list, just to really be sure of exactly what the impact is gonna be for instruction, for the programming, and what have you. We've had some discussion, but now it's obviously real. And we'll be making that determination. We're ready to go off into the summer. So that's the aspect of the conversation I'm still interested in pursuing, although I, I don't think that the idea of turning this into an actual vote is something that would be in our best interest.
Other comments on vote versus accept by consensus, if you will? This is Lou McCormick. Okay, you had other comments that you wanted to make. Can I stay on that, so that we might, the chair might get an understanding as whether to put this on as an action item or not? Mr. Patton, do you have any thought on that?
No, I think it's, it's, sounds safe to leave the amount at the discretion of the staff or on the superintendent, because we don't know. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, is we really just don't know to, to sort of make, to take action next month, to say, we're gonna remove this, this, and this from the budget. You know, that has other implications for future budgets and whatnot. So I'm not really willing to take those kind of risks. I think it's safer to have some leeway.
I shouldn't have put you on the spot. Any other board members wish to make a comment on this question? This is, Ms. Pitko?
I think it's part of a superintendent's importance, understanding to accept it. My concern would be whether more money would have, more funding would have to be taken from somewhere, then I think it should be brought back to the board. So for instance, in July, when we don't meet, all of a sudden, the state takes more money from us. I think that we absolutely should have a say in that, whether it's a vote or the superintendent's report or discussion.
I will say that our past practice has been that when we're facing a major shortfall, that the superintendent, either at each meeting, or at each second meeting of the month where the prior month's activities are known, that they update the list, so that on a month, at least a monthly basis, we'll get a list of what is on the hold pattern and what has been taken off, what has been added if necessary, because of the negative thinking that Ms. Pitko might have on what the state might do. So I think the board should expect that we'll be seeing this list on a monthly basis, especially for the first half of the year. Other board members that wish to make, can I get a comment on, other board members that want to make a comment about management versus a vote at the next meeting? Mrs. Gerber?
I mean, I'm kind of torn, because on the one hand, you know, I feel like one of the board's responsibilities is to vote, and so, but I realize that this year we're under extreme circumstances. But I guess just to go back to the, you know, my concern is, you know, I know you said we'll get updates throughout the course of the, the school year if, if more, you know, reductions are needed. But just to come back to, since I brought it up, you know, the whole class size thing, that's a decision that will have to be made in July, I'm assuming, or in early August. And I'm just concerned that, you know, I, I guess it would just be nice to know that if, if there's going to be a change in class size, you know, in the, the Board of Ed, not policy, but Board of Ed recommendations, I just, I think it would be helpful for the board to know that. At least personally, I would. I don't know if the rest of the board feels the same way.
I think for the public's benefit, because it sounds like the superintendent is looking at a modification of how they approach judging that extra one or two or three students, it probably makes sense to put that on as a discussion item at the next board meeting, so that at least the public can see it on the agenda and be able to make a comment on it, as well as the board could make a comment on it. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So if I look at both these sheets, I just wanna make sure. So right now, we have, basically, from the yellow in this sheet, we have approximately up to a little over two million earmarked, in the event that we need it.
Inclusive of the maintenance items that are shown here.
Inclusive, altogether, so that's an aggregate.
Yeah, altogether, it's about two million.
So to the extent that the need should be higher than that, as Ms. Pitko referenced, it would by default come back to the board for further discussion?
Yes.
That currently how we have it envisioned, right?
Yeah.
And then if it should fall short, then it would go back by the tiers. So you would naturally go through, as we discussed, kind of move up the line like this, if the amount were less than two million.
Some of the, I think some of the tier items, it might be past a point of no return, that even if they wanted to, you couldn't implement it.
Oh, because it was already decided.
So I'm not sure that we would follow the tiers exactly. That might be, not be possible. Not, without looking at each item, you know, there are some items that just, time goes past and it's too late to, you know...
So can we understand what those items are, that have already been, basically the time has gone, so they're not gonna happen regardless? Do, is that, has that been itemized? Is that on this?
Yeah, the yellows.
So all the yellows are ready, they're just not gonna happen?
Right, because summer work, and if you wait to start it, it's in time.
Okay, I see. All right. So then, I guess I am fine with it being at the discretion, so long as it's within that amount. But if it was over that amount, I would hope that it would be returned to the board for further discussion.
And I assume the board is saying that if it's over that amount, but if it's over by twenty-five thousand on a two million dollar list, just having it listed there, fine. It's, it's, we're really talking if it's over by a material amount.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that I agree with that, because I think that, you know, if it's twenty-five thousand dollars, I think if it's a particular program that's being cut or being considered...
That's true.
I think we want to discuss it. I think that no matter what the amount is, if it hasn't made one of the lists, that it's been addressed, that it should be brought back, at least for presentation and discussion and comment. Because, you know, some of these programs are small, but they're important.
No, fair comment. If, if the aquatics program was on there for forty, I'm sure that there would be board members that would comment on it, yes. Other comments? It doesn't appear at the moment that there's, that you, I need to put this on for action. That does not mean if you change your mind for the June meeting, that it couldn't be added to the agenda, because it is a regular meeting and added as a vote. But at the moment, I'll not put it on for action. Mr. Llewellyn, you wanna make a final comment?
I did, thank you. You know, to follow up on a couple of things that were said, Ms. Pitko made a, a good comment, that if we have any cuts from the state, you know, that should probably come to this board, if in fact it's gonna impact, as Ms. Lou McCormick just said, any educational programs. You know, if we're gonna cut, you know, funding to the curbs, you know, that's one thing. If we're gonna be touching any educational aspect, I think it needs to come to the board.
Yeah, clearly.
Well, right, so, you know, I'm not sure we're in a position to say whether or not we, or how this is shaped. So we should probably think about that between now and the next meeting. Maybe it's, 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 you know, with just consent, but, you know, predicated on a couple of things like that.
Other comments that people wish to make? This is a discussion item, so no action is expected tonight. Perhaps the sooner you can suggest where, Mr. Cullen is gonna donate that extra thirty-three thousand.
[laughing]
No, where the thirty-three thousand, probably the sooner you get that information to the board, the, the better off we would be. If there are no further comments, do you have any final comments, where's Ms. Pitko? And then Dr. Jones will make final comments.
I don't know who the, who the chair, who this goes to, Jessica or Dr. Jones. I, I agree with Jessica. I, I think we need some clarification about what'll happen if we get one extra student past class size. Class size is a huge issue to me, as a teacher. So I, I really...
Yeah, that, as you might recall...
And budgetary concerns. I, I wanna know about these things.
As you might recall, I said that we should add that to the agenda, not only so that the board can clearly understand it, but so that the public would have an opportunity to comment on it if they so wished. Any other final comments? If none, thank you very much. I thought we had a good discussion. We are now up to item C on number seven, and that's first reading of a policy. Mrs. Maxon Cunnily?
This one comes with a little bit of urgency, not that I see the board having an issue with this, that this has to be taken care of by the end of the month, because the FBI has notified districts that there is an audit impending, and this is something that we have to have in place. And that's what prompted this one to come before the policy committee. And, you know, you could see the language that had been there, as well as what was added. And so, as always, questions, or edits, or tweaks, or comma questions, or anything, I would appreciate in advance in the next meeting, because we do have a policy meeting prior to our, our next board meeting, when we'll be voting on this. And so if it's not something I can address, or that I wanna throw out to the committee, then I would have the opportunity to do so.
Any questions on this policy at the moment? This is, Mr. Llewellyn?
I was on the roll on the train on the way home here, so I've got comments on this one for you now, too. If we look at the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says, "District employees shall, within thirty days after the hire, submit to state national criminal checks." I think that need to read along the lines of, prior to being hired, district employees shall submit to the state national and criminal checks. They're, they're giving their permission. Whether or not the district does it, that's a districtable discussion. But they shouldn't be able to withhold their approval for a background check until after they're hired. I mean, they need to waive that upfront.
I'll only say this, if I may. Ann is on vacation today, but I'm, my guess is she would stand up and say, gathering criminal background information on an employee prior to hiring is probably not acceptable. You have to make the hiring decision and then do the background check, understanding that if it doesn't come through correctly, they don't have the job. So that, that, we, we can get clarification on that, but that might be an issue.
Well, the word that I read here is, it says, "submit to." I think submit means not have it actually done, but consent. So maybe the word submit needs to be consent. So prior to being hired, district employees shall consent to a background check. Doesn't mean we have to do it until after the offer, so we can stay within that. But I think, you know, letting somebody who may have a very checkered background work for thirty days prior to having to consent to a background check is a little odd. The other question I have on here is, if I look at the title, it says, "security check and fingerprinting." I don't see fingerprinting mentioned in this. So we, you know, we're consenting, but unless I'm missing a page, which I could be.
Um, part of the...
But it doesn't, it doesn't say it anywhere. They need to consent to a background check and fingerprinting. I know the fingerprinting is what does it, but, or we can strike fingerprinting from the top, but, I know. That's why...
That's how you're getting the...
That's exactly right. That's why I think it needs to say here, they need to consent to fingerprints to be done by the police department, to be done by an F.A. agency. Do they be done by whom?
Well, the committee will take that under advisement. Any other comments that people might wish to make? If not, this will be on the agenda for action at the next meeting. Onto item number eight, approval of minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 9th, 2017. Mrs. Gerber moves? Mrs. Gerber moves. Ms. Pitco seconds. Uh, any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, um, the motion is in front of you, to approve the minutes of the May ninth meeting. All in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Pitco, uh, Mr. Acer, Mrs. Maxon Cenelli, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes. Six to two, uh, yes, six to two. Um, and also for clarification, while, uh, it has been common for Board members not to vote on minutes, that they haven't been at the meeting, uh, while that might be a custom of its rules, does allow Board members to vote on minutes, and so Mr. Acer correctly votes. The Superintendent's report.
Um, just a couple of things, um, I did have the opportunity to go to the Ludlow High School Family Consumer Science Fashion Show that Catherine mentioned tonight, absolutely fabulous, and if it's, when it's on next year, I'd encourage you, uh, to go. It was everything from modeling their own clothes, to the food that the students cooked, um, and watching the little preschoolers in the early childhood program model the clothes, uh, was fabulous. I've also been to a lot of our art shows, um, music concerts over the last few weeks, and just amazed at, really, the art shows are unbelievable, how much time and effort goes into really just transforms their school environments, um, into these fabulous shows, and the same way with the concerts, I've just been so impressed. Um, also, tonight I had, um, had some exchanges with our Chair, and also with our Secretary, about four early release days that are on the calendar, that were put on there for professional development purposes, for early release. They don't statutorily change the calendar in regards to the days students meet, um, or anything of that nature, but it was advised that we go ahead and bring this to the Board, just for you to be able to have for consideration, and go ahead and take a vote on it in June, because there may or may not be support for that. The staff feel like it's something that can really be of a benefit to us. Gaining eight hours of professional development is, is wonderful, especially when you can do it with your entire teaching staff, and we are desperately in need of that right now. Understand that for some parents, for additional early releases, it can be a pain, but also giving the budget, if you just quantify being able to have those eight hours for that many staff members, that's well over two hundred thousand dollars in professional development that we're able to get, at no cost for our staff, and, uh, you know, commend our whole senior, senior team in that we're trying to be as creative as we can, um, and same when, if you go back to the tiers and this other list, we are really trying to be thoughtful going into what we believe is going to be a very difficult budget year, and look at every avenue that we can, um, to have cost savings, and that benefits teachers and children, and, um, Dr. Boyce and Mr. Cummings are, are here tonight and happy to speak to, um, the value in that.
Would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education. Uh, as Dr. Jones said, uh, we've put a lot of time and thought into this, um, proposal. Our concern is, given the current budget times, and, uh, certainly the projected budget, uh, that we're going to be faced with, um, we still face, uh, the fundamental need to continually to invest in, uh, the training of our staff, excuse me, in order that they are able to provide the best instruction for the students. Excuse me, so, we look at this as a necessary investment in that work. Um, I can tell you, for example, just, uh, at the elementary level, next year, as we implement, uh, social studies and three, five, we would look to, um, provide, uh, use those half-days to train the teachers in the upcoming units. Um, uh, excuse me, currently, we're not able to do that, or if we're able to do that at best, it's, uh, splintered over the eleven schools. Uh, an early release day gives us the opportunity to bring each grade level together, um, and train them together, uh, build their collaboration around the work that's going in place, allow them to share resources and materials and ideas in the implementation of new units. Um, that's just one example of the work that we would, um, set out to do. Given these times, or given this, uh, these additional times, I would tell you that our commitment is to provide the highest quality, to make sure that the teachers' time in that P.D., um, is well spent, um, those are, those are the things that we need to have in place. Um, we'll also work with our staff to make sure that, um, our, the staff who provide the professional development, to make sure that they are, um, working with, uh, appropriate, uh, expectations for adult learning. I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts about this, but either.
Dr. Boyce, do you wish to make a comment, and then we'll go into questions?
Dr. Meg Boyce, Director of Secondary Ed, I'd just like to add that, as you may know, it's, it's been very hard for those of us in the instructional office to give up summer work. Our curriculum leaders and liaisons and coordinators spend hours every summer, working with teachers, not only in the creation of curriculum, but also after the Board approves the curriculum, in writing, um, assessments, lesson plans, um, all the things that go into the implementation of the curriculum, and we've worked really hard at ensuring a consistent delivery of, of the curriculum across classrooms and across schools. So these four early release days will help us gain back some time, it's, it's not an even exchange, and so, looking forward, I really hope the time will come when we can bring back this important summer work. Dr. Pruglisi is still working on implementation of the social studies curriculum that you approved last year, that was a huge undertaking, first K-12 curriculum we approved, and it takes a lot of work to do the next stage and, and get it, get it fully written and implemented, uh, with all of the assessments and lesson planning that goes with it. So, um, I think these four early release days are important, um, and it's, as I said, it's, it's a way to somewhat make up for the loss of time this summer.
Uh, just one quick question, uh, Board members, the revised calendar, as proposed, is in front of you, and they include little triangles around the dates that are early dismissal. Could you highlight for us the four that are being changed to early dismissal, so that we, it's easier for us to know?
Yes, um, those four dates are December twelfth, January thirtieth, March thirteenth, and May twenty-second.
March what?
Uh, March thirteenth.
Thirteenth and?
May twenty-second.
May twenty-second, thank you. Questions from Board members, Mrs. Gerber?
Also, there's one additional one, um, from middle school and high school, because the past few years, the Thursday before President's Day weekend has been early dismissal for elementary only, but now it's for all levels, so that would also be new for middle school and high school, so that is Thursday, the fifteenth of February, is also an additional, that's new for high school and middle school, but not for elementary school.
Any other comments from Board members? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
My, my question, I guess, would be regarding the May twenty-second date. It is set so late in the year, professional development benefits that would be able to be practiced after that, might be somewhat limited, so I'm wondering if it would be possible to move the professional development up earlier in the year.
Generally, I would agree with you, but I, I know that, um, Dr. Rasbuis and Mr. Chapetta are just finishing an analysis of the S.A.T. data, for example, and they just could, they've just downloaded it into spreadsheets by teacher with a very intricate array of data for teachers to look at, and that, we don't get that until the end of May. So there are things such as that, um, that we can use that time for, and it's, it would be invaluable for teachers to have that information while they still have the students and before they leave for the summer. So, I can assure you, there, there are many things we can do, and professional development, I think, needs to be thought of broadly, it's not just training teachers about what to do in the classroom, but it's also giving teachers time to look at data and analysis, and, and reflect back on their teaching, and think about what they would change in the future, um, as well. So, I, I believe a May date would be valuable to us.
Uh, Ms. Pitco.
I, I just want to also comment on your question. So, in May twenty-second, I would be meeting with my other colleagues and to talk about maybe their final, how are we going to, we're, we're moving to like a mastery-based learning, so how would we get together to create a common final for them? That would be really important. I moved from a middle school to a high school model, and in middle school, there's, there's plenty of common planning time, in high school, there's not so much of that. So it's really important to have like these professional learning communities, and there's a tremendous reward in meeting with your colleagues and talking about your practice, and learning from them, or learning from somebody outside of the district. When I did my masters, I looked at other countries, and, for instance, a company, countries like Japan, they have half-days every Wednesday, so that the teachers can reflect on their practice.
Other comments, Mrs. Maxon Cenelli?
Um, a, a slightly more radical proposal, because I completely, I, I'm very, uh, not, I'm not happy with what we're losing this summer. Um, I recognize, you know, that the budget implications are what they are, but I know what can happen in the summer that simply can't happen in a school year. Um, and I recognize all the new curricula that we are throwing at these teachers, and they have to be prepared, but the materials have to be prepared in order to prepare them, and that's all, um, up in the air right now. So, here's what I'm asking, what if we took three of these, restored them to full day, and instead took off October ninth as a school day, made that a full day of professional development, and changed the end of school to June thirteenth? What you don't run into in that case is that's a day where a lot of parents would not be working, because it's Columbus Day, and if that became instead, right now, everyone expects it to be school, it would not be different for staff, but if that became a full day of professional development, no school for children, the school year extended one day, and take off three of the half-days of professional development, and instead cover it on that, it puts it earlier in the school year, is therefore more beneficial for many of those aspects of curriculum, in terms of training, instruction, or evaluation, summer A.P. results, whatever, however the different levels we're going to use it. But, it's, it also alleviates the issue of how this is absolutely impacting parents with young children, um, where you have these half-days, and now what do you do with them? And, and people are working, and so, just wanted to throw that out there as an idea of something to consider.
Well, this is good discussion, and the staff will take all of the suggestions to heart, and then come back with a final proposal. Mr. Llewellyn.
Just to follow up on that question, um, or comment, my question is, how many days are in the CBA for the staff, the teaching staff? And it, I, I think we've got, how many?
One eighty-two.
That's for, to teach, but how many days are in the contract work?
I believe it's one eighty-seven.
So we've got room there to do that if we wanted to? Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Patton?
Um, Ms. Maxon Cenelli and I were on the same page, and I was going to do a similar kind of thing, but instead of removing that extra four half-days, I was just going to say, why don't we swap the half-day on October eleventh for the ninth on Columbus Day, and make Columbus Day a full day?
We have to, it's S.A.T.s.
Well, that's S.A.T.s, so we have to have that anyways. Okay, well, either way, I was thinking Columbus Day, the same, the same thing, um, because that would still give us all that extra and get us back a little bit towards the beginning of the year, of what we lost for the summer, and regardless of what happens, hopefully this won't be cut again for next summer, and I would still like to see whatever is approved for this calendar year, for the extra professional development, uh, held even with the summer professional development, if that makes sense. So I'm all for more professional development, if you couldn't tell.
Any other, uh, comments or suggestions? Seeing none, uh, we will put this on as an action item, uh, because the past practice has been to approve the calendar, and therefore changes to it should also be approved, so this will be on as an action item at the first meeting in June. Um, my suggestion is, take these items under consideration, uh, get this to the Board members in advance for the packet, so that if Board members have any questions as to whether their idea is being recommended or not, you might be able to go offline to ask, uh, the staff some more detail as to what their thinking was, which might save us time, uh, at the June meeting. Uh, we're up to, any others, anything else on Superintendent's report? Okay, we're up to Committee and Liaison reports. Let me just say that we have a new Board member, um, and that caused some changes to Committee and Liaison report. Uh, Ms. Pitco has agreed to go into Policy, uh, to ensure that that Committee has three people. Um, I am the liaison to the Holland Hill Building Committee, uh, Mr. Acer is actually a voting member of that Committee, uh, because the, uh, Board, uh, the town guidelines do not allow a Board of Education member to be a voting member of the building, of any building Committee. Um, I will step down as the liaison to the Holland Hill Building Committee, and Mr. Acer has agreed to continue to serve as the liaison to the Holland Hill Building Committee. All of these appointments are good until November, when we review appointments anyways, and then if Mr. Acer is wishing to get off of the Holland Hill Building Committee, he'll let that be known, and if not, he's serving for life. He is, he is also going to replace Anthony Calabrese as a member of the Transportation Safety Board, that doesn't meet on a regular basis, but does Advisory Board, but does meet, uh, as needed, as parents might make, uh, requests for consideration of a change in bus stop. Any other comments on Committee and Liaison reports that people wish to make? Mrs. Gerber?
Just an update on Osborne Hill, uh, the Building Committee met last week, and they did have bids for fencing, um, and, uh, so they're moving ahead with that, and the plan is to have the fencing installed over the summer.
Any other comments on Committee and Liaison reports? Uh, Mrs. Maxon Cenelli?
Um, two, first, I would, uh, like to personally thank Ms. Pitco for being willing to come on board, while Ms. Carnell and I were willing to, uh, do it alone, go it alone, it's a lot easier with another set of eyes, uh, there in Policy, um, so that first, and second, I just want to extend an invitation to the full Board, uh, because we won't meet again prior to this event happening, but on Thursday, and I'll probably send an email as well, but on Thursday, June eighth, uh, PTA Council will be sponsoring their annual awards, uh, where we recognize three, um, active members of the community for their various levels of PTA involvement, as well as we recognize several staff members with the Brian Fagan Award, uh, which comes with a grant, and that will take place on Thursday, June eighth, at seven o'clock at Tomlinson, uh, there in the auditorium. It's just, it's a really nice event, um, also comes with some nice food, but it's a very nice event, um, some well-deserved recognition, uh, for some of our hard-working, uh, PTA volunteers, and so, it'd be wonderful to see some Board members there, and of course, um, members of the public.
Any other comments on Committee and Liaison reports? Uh, on Holland Hill, uh, as my last Liaison report, but Mr. Acer may want to elaborate, um, the Building Committee feels it is on schedule to get all of the votes that they need through the Board of Selectmen, uh, Board of Finance and R.T.M., so that we can file by June thirty, and be, uh, included in the reimbursement rate, um, that will be in effect until July one, uh, so that's good news. Um, they're, uh, reviewing bids at the moment, and, uh, have some reasonable confidence that, that, uh, with some negotiation, the bids will be satisfactory. Uh, the heads of each of those groups, um, are prepared to take action, uh, so, because they are as interested in us qualifying under the old rules for reimbursement as we are, so, uh, that's the status of that, unless Mr. Acer wishes to expand on it.
No, I think there is a meeting this coming Thursday, uh, where we should be reviewing numbers and getting more details, um, at that point, so, um, right now, I believe, May thirty-first is when it's supposed to go to the Board of Selectmen at a special meeting that's been scheduled, um, for a vote.
Okay, if there's no other comments, uh, this is the time where we go to the public, if they, open Board comment. Thank you again. Any member of the Board have any open Board comments? Mr. Patton?
In light of all the hoopla going around, uh, at the state level with, um, with the budget, um, I'd like to at least have a discussion, maybe at the next meeting, um, to possibly have a July meeting at some point, I don't know about swapping it for the August meeting, because I know usually we want a meeting before the beginning of the school year, but, um, I just think that there's too much stuff going on, that, you know, maybe by the time the June meeting comes, we'll have more information, and we might want to consider that.
Thank you. Any other open Board comment? Uh, Mrs. Gerber?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I was very lucky yesterday, um, to, uh, pinch it for Mr. Dwyer at the Rotary Luncheon, honoring the, uh, top students at the, uh, for high schools in Fairfield, Prep, Notre Dame, Ludlow, and Ward, and, um, it was just great seeing all the, uh, the students, and, uh, just all of the talent that they have, and it's always nice to have something positive, so.
Ms. Pitco.
I just wanted to add that in the last month, I was able to take my daughter to the Jennings Carnival, the McKi-
the Jennings Carnival, the McKinney Carnival, and the Riverfield Carnival. Thank you to all of those parents. That's a lot of work to put together, and she surely enjoyed it.
You took her, or she insisted that you go?[1694.83][1694.83](laughing) Final comments? If there are no comments, uh, then, uh, public comment. Any member of the public wish to come forward to talk about any discussion items that they would like to make a comment, uh, now that the board has discussed various items? Please state your name and address.
Suzanne, Miss. 122, Rygate Road. It's, um, more of a request than a comment. Um, the document that you had this evening of the financials, um, was not part of the enclosure, so if the public could get a copy of that, that would be helpful. The other piece is, um, the copy that you're referencing with the yellow highlighting, I believe was left in the back of the room, but we didn't have a colored copy, so I don't know what the yellow is. There was somewhat of a gray, then there was, the rest of it all looked white. Um, it, so for the public to kind of keep pace with what you're all discussing and you have in front of you, if we could somehow either make an enclosure or something so that we can participate and understand kind of what you're looking at, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to come forward and make a comment? I see nobody coming forward, so now on to adjournment. A motion to adjourn. Uh, Ms. Pitco, second. Mr. Acer, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is, please raise your hand. Please raise, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.